We are about to start our meeting. So can I ask for order in the chamber, please? Everybody find a home and get settled. It's May 3rd. This is the Board of County Commissioners' meeting, and I'm going to ask for the roll call, please.
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Kerner.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Commissioner McKinley.
Here.
Commissioner Sacks.
Here.
Mayor Weinroth.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner Sacks, would you please do the invocation, pledge of allegiance? Please stand.
Dear God, we are thankful for this day that you have given us, for its blessings, its opportunities, its challenges. We pray for strength and guidance for each day as it comes, for each day's duties, for each day's problems. May we be challenged to give our best always, and may we be assured of your presence with us. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of the Lord, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. Madam Administrator, do we have any additions, deletions, or substitutions to our agenda?
Mayor, we do not.
That's interesting. Okay.
I'm very happy to report that.
You're happy to report. Okay. I'm going to ask for the motion to move item 5C1A and B. This is airports, which is really a consent item, but I want to move it up to right after consent so that we can get our manager, administrator of the airports back to her job. Can I have a motion? I have a motion by Commissioner Kerner, seconded by the Vice Mayor, all in favor, all opposed. Item 5C1A and B will come before our special presentations. Just to let you know, this is going to be a full agenda today. We are now back to proclamations in public. It's nice to see everybody here. It's nice to see most of the red signs off the seats. We have 14 proclamations today, so it's going to be a little while. We're asking everybody who does receive a proclamation, we'd love to hear from you accepting the proclamation, but please keep your remarks to about three minutes, and then there will be a photo after your proclamation is delivered, and we will try and do this as efficiently as possible. We also are going to have the benefit of our clerk of courts here today to make a presentation. His presentation will be probably around a half an hour, so just to give you an idea of what our morning will be like. With that being said, I'm going to ask if anybody has anything from the consent agenda they would like to pull. Commissioner McKinley.
Yes, I'd like to pull item 3G5.
3G5 is being pulled by Commissioner McKinley. Any other requests? Seeing no further requests, Commissioner Kerner, do we have any comment cards?
I don't see any on the consent agenda, Mayor.
Very good. And so I'm going to look for a motion to approve the consent agenda without item 3G5. I have a motion by the Vice Mayor, a second by the Commissioner Kerner, all in favor, all opposed, show that the consent agenda without item 3G5 has been approved unanimously, seven to zero. We'll now move to item 3G5. Commissioner McKinley.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a really frustrating item, and I do appreciate staff's ability to try to negotiate with the homeowner. This is regarding the settlement of a code enforcement case where a home has been, a non-homesteaded property, has been under watched by code enforcement since 2009. They amassed $356,000 worth of code enforcement violations. We are now settling with them for $19,000 because they want to sell their home, and they don't want to sell their home with that kind of lien. They did not participate in our amnesty program. And here we are, where the neighbors have had to live next door to this property since 2009, which if you do the math, that's 13 years. Thirteen years this property owner has failed to comply with code enforcement and has failed to pay any liens, any fines that were assessed on them, and I don't think it comes as any secret. I'm targeting the overall problem with code enforcement, and you've seen some of the projects or issues I've had to deal with in my district regarding horrific living conditions in properties that have been under code enforcement's purview. There's no teeth in state statute for code enforcement to be able to do anything, and the people who have to rent and live in these homes don't deserve to live in those kinds of conditions. The neighbors that have to live next door to these properties don't deserve to live in those types of proximities to homeowners who can't, property owners who can't do their job properly and keep their home in order. I don't know what the answer to this is, but if code enforcement or somebody can give us a little explanation, or our budget department, on how we ended up with a property in violation for 13 years, and we're writing off approximately $325,000 worth of fines that they amassed when they decided not to participate in the amnesty program and come into compliance.
Commissioner, are you looking for a presentation? Do you want to make a motion to postpone this to another date, and we can give staff direction to maybe review this particular?
I'd like to hear a real quick synopsis, only because I'm dealing with some pretty egregious situations in my district that are similar to this situation.
Okay. Mr. Rutter, you are up.
Mayor, good morning. Actually, Ramsey will be, has got some information, happy to share with the board.
Very good.
So Commissioner McKinley is correct, it has taken 13-plus years to get this property to compliance. I was not involved in the negotiations on the settlement of this because it's more of a board action. The difference between this and some of the other ones, this was a fence and disrepair that they just neglected to take care of for X many years. There was allegations that proper service wasn't made. That was not true. We did have proper service. They were fully aware and told to fix it, but it was just a fence. So $19,000 for a fence perhaps is fair, but that's up to the board to decide. Yes, do we, are they selling the house? And yes, is it not homesteaded? Correct. And are they walking away with some money? Absolutely. It's at the board's discretion as to what, if they want to take the $19,000 settlement that they agreed on, or go back to the table.
Were they qualified to have participated in the program we had before?
If they had simply just fixed the fence, which would have taken 20 minutes to fix the fence, then they could have paid the $200 or whatever and had everything erased. So, and they were notified.
Okay. Commissioner McKinley?
Yeah, I'm not going to hull out the sale of this home because some family deserves to be able to purchase that home that they want to purchase, but Ms. Baker, I would like to, I'd like a presentation maybe in a future workshop of properties that are in similar situations like this. I know that the one in the unincorporated area of Pahokee in my district, the Joe Lewis Apartments, that one was on code enforcement's radar for a few years, and I think we've all seen the very well-publicized living conditions that those families had to live in, and I don't think it's fair. And if we've got processes that we're allowed to utilize, I think we need to put some teeth into our ordinances and give property owners a certain amount of time to come into compliance before we use all legal remedies that we're entitled to use, and we shut them down, and if we have to take over their property and demolish their structures and resell it to somebody who can build healthy housing, then I'm all for that. This one is a fencing situation, still unfair to the neighbors that were surrounding them, but the other situations across this county are disgusting, and I'm really tired of it.
One thing we are working on is a list of potential properties to foreclose on, and hopefully that'll get people's attention, that when they don't pay their fines and they don't behave, that we'll foreclose on their properties. So that's something we're working with legal, and obviously we'll go through the board and county administration to get, start getting some attention and using that. Statute does say we have to give them reasonable time to come into compliance, so that's kind of broad.
Yeah, that's, I think, yeah.
About 13 years is not a reasonable amount of time.
No, I, not for this one, but one, you know, just the regular ones moving forward. So.
It certainly is telling that didn't take advantage of a program which would have just wiped this whole thing off the books.
Correct. And I, I don't know why they didn't.
Administrator Baker, you wanted to be recognized.
We will bring this issue back to the board. We'll go back, we'll look at our existing ordinance, work with the county attorney's office on these issues, find out what our options are. Prior boards have given different directions. This is a different board, and I hear you loud and clear. So we'll go back and we'll make some, come back to you with some recommendations for your consideration.
Thank you. And, you know, two years to try to come into compliance for a mother with an infant whose kitchen sink was filling up with raw sewage is not a reasonable amount of time. And I'd also like to include a presentation when you do come back to us from Legislative Affairs about what we can ask the state legislature to do to help us with this. Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and move approval of item 3G5 and hope that nothing like this comes back to us again.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner McKinley, seconded by Commissioner Kerner. I have, Commissioner Moreno wants to be recognized.
To continue the discussion, I totally agree with Commissioner McKinley, and I, we've had discussions about the payouts in previous board meetings, and until people realize that there is truly a penalty for them being in violation, they are going to continue to take advantage of the system. So if it's putting in a timeframe, a drop-dead date of a timeframe, then we need to do that because we are not doing ourselves a service by letting somebody get away with a tiny, I mean, if it's just a fence, 13 years, they should have, it should have been within X amount of time you get this done, or, you know, it should have been a heavier premium for this, and it should be going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor, all opposed, that is approved, seven to zero. Before we move on from the consent agenda, I just wanted to go back to 3J2. This was a number of tax exemptions that we have approved. These are historical rehabilitations. I've had some conversation with the county administrator, and I'd like to study whether this program, as it is now in place, should be revised. My understanding is that I have no problem with the tax exemptions being given for the rehabilitation, but that the benefit is then inuring to the owners of these properties, and they're gaining the full benefit upon sale. I'm not quite sure whether that's really fair, and without having a long discussion about it, I see Mr. Rutter has sat down, and I guess you would like to just give me a little bit of a flavor of what's going on, but I think we can do this as a presentation in the future.
Mayor, yes, that's what I was going to recommend the board. If you give us an opportunity to put together broader information, a little more by way of history, cities participating, all those points, can give the board all that information in one time and take your direction moving forward.
I would appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Rutter. Okay. We're now going to move on to the reordered agenda, which is 5C1. I have a motion to approve by the Vice Mayor, a second by Commissioner Kerner, all in favor, all opposed, seven to zero. Ms. Beebe, I tried to keep you out of here today.
Thank you.
Okay. Have a great day. All right. We are now ready to go into the fun part of our agenda. It's time for proclamations. As I said, please keep your remarks when you receive your proclamation down to about three minutes. There will not be a bell, so, you know, if you have a little bit more to say, we'll certainly appreciate it. We're going to go on the left and the right. District 2 is going to be on my left, and District 3 is going to be on my right. We have our proclamations, and let's get going.
Good morning, and I'd like to have Dave Lawrence, Jennifer Sullivan, and is Sam Nagel Egert here to join me, and anyone else from the Cultural Council? Great. Good morning, everybody. This is my, oh my goodness, all right. This is my opportunity to present a proclamation on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners declaring that May 2022 as Palm Beach County Arts and Culture Month, whereas Palm Beach County is known as Florida's cultural capital because there are hundreds of arts and science and history organizations in the area, and whereas Palm Beach County's cultural sector contributes more than $633 million in economic impact and more than 14,000 full-time jobs, and welcomes more than 3.9 million cultural tourists in a healthy year, and whereas this year's Arts and Culture Month celebration will be critical in helping cultural organizations continue to recover from a $360 million loss in economic activity due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas in its mission to help the arts flourish, the Cultural Council of Palm Beach, for Palm Beach County invites visitors and residents to celebrate the fifth anniversary of Mosaic, which stands for Month of Shows, Art, Ideas, and Culture, which is a special promotion in May that drives cultural tourism and showcases the Palm Beaches for our diverse cultural offerings. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session on this third day of May 2022, that May 2022 in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed Arts and Culture Month. Congratulations.
In the absence of a remark, I, let's go ahead. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor, and it's an honor and a pleasure to be here today, Mr. Mayor and members of the Board of County Commissioners, for two very important and very meaningful proclamations. It's certainly a unique honor for me to present the first proclamation, which honors National Correctional Officers' Employees Week here in the state of Florida and in Palm Beach County, but also a somber reminder of the sacrifice and commitment that our law enforcement officers and correctional officers in this county have and give towards the citizens and residents and visitors to Palm Beach County. So in declaring May 1 through May 7th as National Correctional Officers' Employees Week, I also want to take a moment to ask Colonel Starling and the men and women of his department to join us here. We have several members under his leadership. If you could join me right up here as I read the names of PBSO correctional officers that have lost their lives in the line of duty in the last year. Sergeant Jose Diaz Ayala, Deputy Maurice Ford, Deputy Angela Shavers, Sergeant Marcus James, Deputy Stephen Murphy, civilian Gregory Pierre, and civilian employee Michelle Cunningham. Each and every member, every name that I just read did pass away during the last year in the line of duty as part of the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office Corrections Division, and it's a very stark reminder of how uniquely impacted your profession has been throughout COVID-19. I'm also going to ask the members of the Florida Highway Patrol, led by Sergeant Wigfall, and members of the West Palm Beach Police Department to join me up here as well. And we'll start with a proclamation declaring May 1 through 7, 2022 as National Correctional Officers' Employees Week, whereas one of the primary goals of correctional officers and employees is to provide an effective correction system that concentrates on quality for all inmates in its care, custody, and control, whereas Palm Beach County's dedicated correctional officers and employees are essential to the success of our criminal justice process, and whereas correctional employees encounter daily exposure to a hostile environment with many of the most dangerous individuals in society, and whereas these employees perform their duties in a most professional and dedicated manner, and whereas all citizens are joined or asked to join in expressing appreciation for outstanding service of correctional officers and employees. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session this third day of May 2022, that May 1 through May 7, 2022 in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed National Correctional Officers' Employees Week. And I'll just close on this thought by remembering my short time in law enforcement and the intensity and stress of having to go to the jail in Alachua County and on occasion here in Palm Beach County, and for a moment in time getting to peek behind the curtain of what really are unsung heroes and professionals. The men and women of Palm Beach County have the opportunity to see our street law enforcement officers and patrol officers on duty, and it's much, it's much easier to recognize the contribution and sacrifices that they give, but it's so important for us as residents to remember that these men and women do what they do and risk their lives behind closed and locked doors and facilities that none of us have access to, and in doing so, they not only care for and protect the residents of Palm Beach County, but they have a duty and oath to protect some of the most violent and dangerous criminals in society, and for that, we honor you. Thank you, Colonel Starling.
Mayor, Commissioners, everyone that's here and those that may be watching, on behalf of Sheriff Bradshaw, Chief DiMario, and all of the corrections family, this is just a small group of individuals. We would just like to say thank you. Thank you for recognizing the work that we do, and we appreciate each and every one of you. It means a lot because we're all connected, and no matter what profession you in, we're in one world, living one life, and we have to do that together, whether someone is incarcerated or not. But we appreciate each and every one of you. I appreciate my peers, the command staff, I appreciate each of you Commissioners. Thank you so much.
If I could get Jeff Wagner, Star Hunter, Orlando de la Osa, Seth Bernstein, and Marcia Weber to join me up here, and if there's anyone else. This is, these are folks from our National Association of Letter Carriers, and we're here today, we're gonna, I know we see you all delivering packages to our homes, and I guess regardless of the weather, regardless of pandemics, you all continued to make sure that we received our mail and so many other supplies that were necessary. But this is a, what you're doing, and what you do each and every year is to make sure you actually pick up from our homes by this food drive that you do to help folks in our community that are food insecure. So with that, the, we are declaring that May 14, 2022, as National Association of Letter Carriers Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive Day, whereas each year on the second Saturday of May, letter carriers across the country collect non-perishable foods as part of the nation's largest food drive and distribute the donations to local food banks. And whereas despite the wealth in Palm Beach County, more than 181,000 residents, including 52,580 children, do not have enough to eat on a daily basis. And whereas 2022 marks the 30th anniversary of the Letter Carrier's Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive, and more than 2 billion pounds of food has been collected nationally since its inception, and whereas the National Association of Letter Carriers Local Chapter 1690 collects more than 500,000 pounds of food annually to help fight hunger as part of the countywide hunger relief plan, and whereas United Way of Palm Beach County, the Palm Beach County Food Bank, Farm Share, the AFL-CIO, and the U.S. Postal Service Rural Carriers are all proud partners supporting the Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive, and whereas the public is encouraged to participate in this food drive on May 14 by leaving non-perishable food donations by mailboxes and in post offices to help feed the hungry of all ages in our community, especially during our summer months when resources are fewer. Together, Palm Beach County can stamp out hunger. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session on this third day of May 2022, that May 14 in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed National Association of Letter Carrier Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive Day in Palm Beach County. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Weiss. We just want to thank you guys for this opportunity of once again having the proclamation. I, as a letter carrier, have 38 years of service, and for 30 years, the second Saturday in May, the letter carriers have collected food from our residential communities. We put cards in their mailboxes to remind them of this special event every year. The past two years, we had COVID, and we were unable to collect food. Although many customers felt the need, they made donations to local food banks. Once the food banks received this, they were just thoroughly happy, and they went out and purchased food for their pantries, their church pantries. So we just want to thank you as the letter carriers, the United States Postal Service, that we can have this united, all over the United States of America, one day, second Saturday in May, to be able to collect food, non-perishable items, from the residents that we deliver mail to and we see every single day. Thank you very much.
Do we have any members of the West Palm Beach Police Department that will join me up here at the dais, along with, if we have Jamie Williams and Janine Testa available? Ladies and gentlemen, and Colonel Starling, could I ask you to come join us on behalf of the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office? This is a humbling occasion for myself, and I'm sure for everybody else in the chambers today and those watching, we have with us today in honor of declaring May 15, 2022 as Peace Officers Memorial Day. We obviously have some representatives of Florida's finest in our county sheriff's office in the city of West Palm Beach. These men and women, as you know, serve day in and day out, through all hours of the day, all holidays, children's birthdays, and important events. They are on the street, doing their investigations and arresting and protecting our community. But we also have two members, or two spouses, two survivors, that are here on behalf of their husbands, Robert A. Williams and Anthony Christopher Testa, who passed away. And to have two survivors here is an incredible honor, and we're humbled by your presence. If we give them a round of applause, please. And I'm also delighted to have not just the Board of County Commissioners and all these wonderful people here, but we have our clerk and comptroller, Joseph Abruzzo, here with us today. He served in the Coast Guard, and he's a huge supporter of law enforcement, so it's an honor to have you with us here today, sir. And so I have the honor of declaring May 15, 2022, Peace Officers Memorial Day in Palm Beach County, and whereas from the beginning of this nation, law enforcement officers have played an important role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms which are guaranteed by the U.S. Constitution and in protecting lives and property of our citizens, and whereas throughout the constant application of new procedures and techniques, officers are becoming more efficient in enforcing our laws, and whereas it is important that people know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police departments and the necessity for cooperating with them in maintaining law and order, and whereas it is fitting and proper to express our gratitude for the dedicated service and courageous deeds of law enforcement officers and for the contributions they have made to the security and well-being of our county residents. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session this third day of May 2022, that May 15, 2022 in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed Peace Officers Memorial Day. And so I'll open up the floor to any members of law enforcement community and the survivors if you'd like to make some comments, but let me just tell you that in addition to serving in law enforcement, I also was the son of a law enforcement officer, and I share and shared with you the constant fear and concern in having to find that internal strength of having watched someone you love every day to go off and protect your community and come home and somehow deal with that. Of course, how lucky and fortunate I am to still have my father with me, and I did not have to face the horror and tragedy of losing someone that I love in law enforcement. So thank you for being here today. I'll also note that Dave Bernhardt, retired captain and my chief of staff, traveled to Tallahassee last week on behalf of the county and the county commission to participate in services honoring law enforcement officers lost in the line of duty. And my final comment will be that I know that law enforcement and policing in this nation has oftentimes come under intense scrutiny with the dialogue that sometimes does not serve the needs of the residents and those serve the needs of the residents and those that need to be protected. But I can promise you that the men and women that serve in policymaking positions in this county, particularly this Board of County Commissioners, we have your back and we're very thankful for what you do. Can I open up the floor to anybody that would like to speak? All right, well, thank you so much for being here. We're gonna take a picture very quickly. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. There is one word that most aptly describes what happened with the creation of our beautiful county, Palm Beach. This is the same word that describes our continuing success as a county. That one word: tourism. Tourism. And it is my great honor and privilege to call Glenn Jurgensen up today. Glenn Jurgensen is the chairman, he is the head. He is the leader of our, of our travel and tourism board, and I have been so blessed to have been their chief of, their chairman of that board. So we and the county commission have come together. This is so like Glenn, he wants everybody up, he wants everybody up here. Come on up. Don't get too excited, Glenn, we have another one later on, just for you. We and the county commission are going to declare May 1st to the 7th, 2022, as National Travel and Tourism Week. Whereas the travel industry is critical to rebuilding our local economy since the onset of COVID-19. And whereas the loss in travel spending had a drastic effect on employment with a loss of 2.3 million jobs. And whereas pre-pandemic travel industry employers were among the largest, the largest in the private sector in the United States, supporting over 9.4 million jobs. And whereas the Palm Beach County Tourist Development Council's agencies, which include Discover the Palm Beaches, the Cultural Council for Palm Beach County, the Palm Beach County Sports Commission, the Palm Beach County Film Commission, and the Palm Beach County Convention Center, develop marketing and sales strategies to support tourism, which generates an annual district direct visitor spending of $5.5 billion in the local economy, with local economic impact of $7.8 billion. Whereas the Palm Beach County Tourism Industry in 2021 welcomed 8 million visitors, who were serviced by more than 90,000 jobs. And as an aside, I was on a flight late last night from San Francisco, California, to Palm Beach County. The plane was packed, so some of these thousands of people are coming, happen to be on that same plane. Whereas the Tourist Development Council and its contracted agencies provide the destination awareness that has driven Palm Beach County's positive growth and tourism performance. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session this third day of May 2022, that May 1st to the 7th, in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed National Travel and Tourism Week. Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner, very much. Mayor, Commissioners, it's really, I just wanted to mention that it's really, this strong recovery that we are having in tourism is because of the associates in the tourism industry. The leisure and hospitality sector that we have, the men and women that are working in this industry, the, the, the folks that welcome you at the front desk, the folks that clear the dishes from the tables, the folks that clean the rooms, the housekeepers and the like, these are the folks that are making this recovery so strong for us. And it's still not there. The leisure and hospitality employment in April 22, in April of 2020, went down 50%. So we went from about 95, 96,000 employees down to the mid 40s. It was devastating for those folks, many of them did not come back to the industry. And we are still not back. And I reported to the TDC in February of this year that we were at 89,600 employees back in the sector, still about 6% shy of that 95,100 we had in 2019 of February. So it's certainly, we're, we're getting there, we're not there yet. Bed tax collections are absolutely going through the roof, the recovery is terrific. But we want to get those employees back to work, we want to get them back into the tourism industry, which is such a great career for many, many folks that want to come into this, this thriving part of the world economy, there is no doubt. So certainly, we, we want to thank those folks who are making this recovery happen, and I want to thank the Board of County Commissioners and certainly Ms. Baker for supporting us with the recovery stimulus that we came to you about a year and a half ago and said, "We want to continue to advertise to make sure Palm Beach County continues to be on the map." So we thank you for that.
Good morning. We are going a little bit out of order because our next honoree has to get back to be able to do a live broadcast at noon from the station of WPTV. It's my honor, it's not often an elected official recognizes a member of the media whom we're so often under, under critique from, but when that reporter is fair and does such a wonderful job and such a long distinguished career, she deserves such recognition. I'd like to invite Kelly Dunn up to the podium. Good morning. We are going to declare May 25th, 2022 as Kelly Dunn Day. Whereas WPTV News Channel 5 co-anchor Kelly Dunn is retiring on May 25th after having been a trusted source of local news and life-saving information for residents of Palm Beach County for more than 36 years. She started in middle school. She has lived in the great village of Wellington for a number of years during her career in broadcasting. While helping to keep the public informed, Kelly has interviewed a variety of people on a wide range of topics and told the stories of everyday heroes and significant newsmakers, including former presidents, members of Congress, U.S. senators, governors, celebrities, and experts. Whereas in February of 1986, she entered the broadcasting profession at WPTV News Channel 5 in West Palm Beach, began her career as a reporter, worked her way up to morning and noon anchor, and became the face of the 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock, and 11 p.m. news. During her career in television news, Kelly has anchored more than 20,000 newscasts, written thousands of stories, and led the public through many hurricanes, and hopefully not any before you retire, and weather events. She has volunteered countless hours for Food for Families and the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation here in Palm Beach County. She is a six-time Emmy award-winning journalist, has received many journalistic awards for her storytelling, and has been an inspiring mentor to the next generation of journalists. Whereas outside of work, she is a devoted wife to her husband John and a loving mother to their children Jonathan and Christina. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County here today, that May 25th in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed Kelly Dunn Day. And my aide said I needed to say farewell, Cal, on a job well done.
Thank you very much, Commissioner McKinley. I really appreciate that, appreciate all of those kind words, and I'm so honored. I really do thank you all from my heart for giving me my own day. It is weird to think of leaving Palm Beach County because I literally grew up here, starting at Channel 5 when I was 22, and I'm moving to North Carolina, where all Floridians go eventually. And I, I will always have Palm Beach County in my heart. My first and only professional job was here. My daughter was born at Wellington Regional, my son at Good Samaritan. They went to the Palm Beach County School System, and I have really thoroughly enjoyed being part of this community and telling people's stories. So thank you very, very much for this honor. I really appreciate it. And I'll miss you all, but don't worry, I'm not moving to the moon. I'll be back occasionally. I'll, I'll be checking up on Palm Beach County. Thank you again. Okay, moving right along, as we, I think we have 14 of these today. I'm going to be doing the proclamation for a Small Business Week, and it's my honor to do this because as the daughter of two small business owners, my mom owned a travel agency and then, and my dad was, excuse me, owned a hardware store. And I've been an independent contractor my entire adult life until I came into elected office. So I really feel the kinship of doing this award. And I, I'd like to ask Tanya Davis-Johnson from the Office of Equal Business Opportunity, Jonathan Brown from the Department of Housing and Economic Development, and Sherri Howard, also from the Department of Housing and Economic Development, to join us up here for this proclamation. So declaring, the proclamation of the Board of County Commissioners declaring May 1st through 7th, 2022, as Palm Beach County Small Business Week. Whereas every year since 1963, the President of the United States has issued a proclamation announcing National Small Business Week that recognizes the critical contributions of America's entrepreneurs and small business owners. And whereas more than half of Americans either own or work for small businesses that create about two out of every three new jobs in the U.S. each year. And whereas May 1st through 7th, 2022, has been designated as National Small Business Week. And whereas part of National Small Business Week, the U.S. Small Business Administration takes the opportunity to highlight the impact of outstanding entrepreneurs and small business owners from all 50 states and U.S. territories. And whereas the Palm Beach County Office of Equal Business Opportunity, a division committed to monitoring the conditions affecting small business while serving as their advocate, takes this opportunity to celebrate and recognize the contributions and importance of small businesses in the local economy. And whereas in celebration of National Small Business Week, the Palm Beach County Office of Equal Business Opportunity will host and participate in a series of workshops to assist entrepreneurs wishing to start a business, help local small businesses seeking to grow and/or expand their business, and teach small business owners how to conduct business within Palm Beach County. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session this third day of May 2022, that May 1st through 7th, 2022, in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed Palm Beach County Small Business Week, and it is truly my honor. And whoever would like to say something.
Good morning, and thank you, Commissioner, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the Board. Thank you so much for your continued support of local small businesses here in Palm Beach County. We recognize that small businesses are big business here, here in Palm Beach County, and we're grateful for the support that we have from the Board as well as county administration. I'd also like to thank Jonathan Evans and Sherri Howard for their collaborative efforts in supporting the initiatives of small businesses. I apologize. Jonathan Brown, I'm sorry, Jonathan. Jonathan Brown and Sherri Howard for their collaborative efforts and support of local small businesses. It's a good thing when we can get together and really bring in our small businesses and have them work on behalf of the county to grow and thrive here in the county. Jonathan, would you like to make any comment?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Administrator Baker, again, it is a wonderful thing to be involved in this business, these business programs. And over these past few years, as we've dealt with COVID, we have just continued to better our relationship with Tanya Johnson and her department, as well as our business partners from the Business Development Board to the BBIC, to Ted Center, to the CEO and FAU organizations. It is absolutely a collaborative effort, and we thank you all so much for your support for our businesses in this community.
Moving right along, ladies and gentlemen, a few minutes ago, I told you that there was one word that really was responsible for the creation of Palm Beach County. Now we're going to look at a word that is most responsible for our continuing sustainability as a county, and that is water. So if I could have our Assistant County Administrator, Todd Bonlarin, as well as Kristin Bernstein, Deputy Director for Water Utilities, and Cheryl McCorkle of the South Florida Water Management District, our regional representative, if they could come on up and receive this award. We're going to declare May 15th to the 21st, 2022, as Water Reuse Week. Whereas safe, clean, and sustainable water resources are essential to Florida's environment, economy, citizens, and visitors. And whereas although Florida's water supplies are finite, the population and need for water resources continue to increase. And whereas water reuse provides a means for conserving and augmenting Florida's precious water resources and is key to the state's sustainable water future. And whereas Florida has established the encouragement and promotion of water reuse as state objectives in Chapters 373 and 403 of Florida statutes. And whereas Florida's permitted reuse capacity is more than 1.8 billion gallons per day, which is approximately 70% of Florida's total permitted capacity for all domestic wastewater treatment facilities. Nice job, that's a lot of water. Florida has risen to the national leader in water reuse, reusing nearly 820 million gallons of reclaimed water per day to conserve freshwater supplies and recharge our freshwater resources. And whereas May, typically a dry month, when water demands are high, is a good time to educate residents about how they can save Florida's precious water resources through water reuse. And whereas Water Reuse Florida, the state section of the Water Reuse Association, has proclaimed the week of May 15th to the 21st as Florida Reuse Water Week. And whereas Palm Beach County Water Utilities Department has joined with Water Reuse Florida, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and the South Florida Water Management District in encouraging and promoting water reuse and conservation. And whereas Palm Beach County Water Utilities Program Department has implemented a water reuse program and encourages the efficient and effective use of reclaimed water, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session this third day of May, that May 15th to the 21st, 2021, in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed Water Reuse Week. Congratulations very much.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Administrator Baker, for your continued support of reuse. Water Utilities Department has been a leading supplier of reused water since the early 1990s, and we continue that today. Also, we continue to be pioneers in the industry as we embark on the Green Kay Phase 2 project, which we look forward to completing in a few years. Thank you very much.
If you haven't been to Green Kay, definitely go visit. It's one of the most, one of the most beautiful parks that we have, and it's all about water reuse. Thank you.
I would like to invite up to the podium retired United States Navy Captain Deirdre Kraus, who also has a doctorate and is a nurse practitioner, and I'm not sure what FM PBC stands for, but there's a lot of initials after her name. I would also like to invite up Marg, Margaret Erie, Cynthia Tagliaferri, Sally Chester, Angela Bonnaby, Meritess Quinto, Sylvia Acosta, and Penny Blake. And while they work their way up to the podium, we are declaring May 6th through the 12th, 2022, as National Nurses Week. This one is personal for me. My aunt spent 40 years as a neuro ICU nurse at a hospital in Houston, and spent three and a half months in the very beginning of the COVID epidemic in ICU in a coma from COVID, and I do believe it was her, her calling as a nurse that somebody greater was watching out for her and pulled her through that. But even more personal than that, my mother was a registered nurse for 30 years. She was a psychiatric nurse, and she ran the crisis stabilization unit on the overnight shifts over the weekend, both in adolescent pediatrics and as well as the adult unit. So I grew up under the wing of a nurse, and it was a very interesting way to grow up. I do thank her for making me wear sunscreen from a very young age. Whereas since 1991, National Nurses Week is May 6th through 12th. It's been celebrated annually and is also known as National Recognition Day for nurses. May 12th is the birthday of Florence Nightingale, the founder of modern nursing. The National Nurses Week theme, You Make a Difference, was selected with an appreciation for nurses' unparalleled impact during the pandemic as well as their contributions. National Nurses Week is a time of year to reflect on the important contributions that nurses make to provide safe, high-quality health care. Whereas the Florida Nurses Association, as the voice for registered nurses in this state, is is working to chart a new course for healthy, a healthy state that relies on increasing access to primary and preventative health care and better utilization of all of our nation's registered nursing resources. Whereas nurses are known to be patient advocates, acting fearlessly to protect the lives of those under their care. They represent the largest segment of the health care workforce, and they're educated to be sensitive to regional and community customs of persons needing that care. Nurses touch the lives of residents from birth to the end of life. And whereas Palm Beach County recognizes the significant contribution of nurses to the health care system and encourages residents to observe National Nurses Week with appropriate recognition ceremonies, activities, and programs to demonstrate the importance of our nurses. Now therefore be it proclaimed by our Board of County Commissioners that today we are declaring May 6th through the 12th in 2022 in Palm Beach County as National Nurses Week. And I know that on behalf of my Board, we have certainly given a lot of credit as a county commission to those that fall under our jurisdiction, our law enforcement officers and our first responders, firefighters, and paramedics. We don't often get to thank our nurses for being unsung heroes, particularly during the last two years. And I know that you have been called to work way more overtime than you ever expected to deal with situations and trying to provide a comfort to patients when their families couldn't come into the hospital. And you have been the lifeline between families and their loved ones. So thank you for everything that you have done. And I'll let you take the mic.
Mayor, Commissioners, and everyone here, thank you very much. Every year from May 6th to Florence Nightingale's birthday on May 12th is designated as National Nurse Week. National Nurses Week celebrates and acknowledges nurses and the hard work they put into making their patients feel comfortable. This year, in 2022, the theme for Nurse Week is You Make a Difference. This was selected to encourage nurses, individuals, employers, and other health care professionals and community leaders just like yourselves to recognize and promote the vast contributions and positive impact of the 2.4 million American nurses. In Palm Beach County, we have almost 34,000 licensed nurses. They are essential to every health care setting, hospitals, nursing homes, ambulatory care centers, public health units, patients' homes. And it's about 75% of them are actively working on the front line for the COVID pandemic. The very core of nursing, caring for patients at the bedside, remains unchanged. Nurses bring a special compassion and concern for the patient and for the patient's family. They hold fast to that special covenant with the people of Florida and play a vital role in educating people on how to prevent illnesses and promote good health. Nurses are essential not only to every health care setting, but to every person's health. We thank you for this honor today.
And let the record show that we have a public comment card, a non-speaking card from Sally Chester with the words Nurses Rock. Okay, next one, Building Safety Month. Can I have Doug Wise, Ramsey Bulkeley, Whitney Carroll, David Dorita, come on up? Last year, June 24th is a day that many people will not forget. It was a day that we saw something that had never really happened before, except for terrorism, a building collapsed in Surfside. And today, we are going to talk about building safety because it's something we take for granted. But obviously, after Champlain Towers, we understand that we need these people in our employ to be out there making sure that every one of our buildings remains safe. So let me read the proclamation that's being delivered today. Whereas Palm Beach County is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of homes, buildings, and infrastructures that serve our citizens in everyday life and in times of natural disaster. And whereas our confidence in the structural integrity of the buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas dedicated members of Palm Beach County Building Department Division and Fire Rescue Department implement and enforce the highest quality codes to protect our residents in the buildings where they live, work, and play. And whereas our community benefits economically from the Florida Building Code and the Florida Fire Prevention Code, which help to protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, wildfires, and floods. And whereas the International Code Council Building Safety Month 2022 theme, Safety for All, Building Codes in Action, brings awareness of the importance of building safety, fire prevention, and disaster mitigation, and recognizes that countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by local, state, and local agencies. And whereas Building Safety Month promotes the commitment of local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies to improve building safety in the community, and acknowledges the essential service they provide to all in protecting lives and property. Now therefore be it proclaimed that May 20, May 2022, in Palm Beach County will be known as Building Safety Month.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it very much. I want to thank the team that helps us with this in the back. I got to give a shout out Mary Blakeney and her staff. Week Three is Disaster Preparedness, talks about the four phases of emergency management. I got Megan Houston up here. She wasn't on the agenda, but she's the energy and innovation person. We work about energy and resiliency. Week Two is near and dear to me. We're looking for people that want careers in building safety, fire marshals, inspectors, plan reviews. So anybody listening to my voice that wants a career, call us. And then Week Four is Water Safety. I think we already talked about that earlier today. So it's talking about making sure there's a clean supply of potable water for the future of our community. So I think all these themes tied into what I heard earlier. So thank you. We really appreciate the honor, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And again, the Help Wanted sign is out, so if you're looking for a county job, just, you know, contact us. We have an online opportunity for you to see what opportunities are available in the county.
So normally, county commissioners have a two proclamation limit. I'm breaking that rule today. This is my third proclamation. You'll understand why it was important to do this third one. We are declaring May 2022 as Hidden Heroes Month. I'd like to invite up James Green, Taruna, Taruna, I always mess up your last name, Ahautra, Andy Reese, and Greg Dover. And if Drew Farrell and Henry Farrell are in the audience, I'd like to invite them up too. Drew's husband is the veteran we're recognizing. We've been working with Henry since 2015. He's a Navy veteran and served during Vietnam. Oh, good, we do have him. Whereas the series of wars and conflicts our nation has been engaged in since World War II has resulted in five and a half million military and veteran caregivers who are parents, spouses, siblings, and friends, caring for the wounded, ill, or injured who have served our nation, as documented by the 2014 RAN study on military caregivers commissioned by the Elizabeth Dole Foundation. Whereas the daily tasks of military and veteran caregivers can include bathing, feeding, dressing, and caring for the grievous injuries of our wounded warriors, administering medications, providing emotional support, caring for the family and the home, and working outside the home to earn essential income. And whereas the nation provides multifaceted support to our wounded, ill, and injured veterans and service members through public, private, and philanthropic resources, but their caregivers receive little support or acknowledgement. Whereas most military and veteran caregivers consider the challenging work they do as simply carrying out their civic and patriotic duty without realizing they are, in fact, caregivers, and they don't identify themselves as such. Whereas according to research, an alarming number of military and veteran caregivers suffer numerous debilitating mental, physical, and emotional effects as a result of their caregiving duties. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners, Community Services Departments, Division of Senior and Veterans Services recognizes and supports those who are serving in these vital roles in our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled today, that May 2022, in our county, is Proclaimed Hidden Heroes Month. I'd like to invite our Clerk of Court to come stand with me, since he is a veteran of the U.S. military, to present this proclamation with me. And I'd also like to ask that we all stand and recognize the service of our veteran that is among us today and give him and his wife and his caregiver a round of applause.
Members of the Board, Mayor, thank you very much for this. This is a very, very big honor. I'd like to thank my director, James Green, my boss, Faith Mumfry, our PR folks, Liz and her team, the great work they've done in helping us get this off the ground. Palm Beach County is the home to over 83,000 veterans, with the third-largest county in the state of Florida. There are over 6 million care providers nationwide that care for veterans with precious little resources. Being a part of Hidden Heroes and partnering with Hidden Heroes will give us some of the tools we need to help support some of these care providers. And I want to recognize somebody that's very special to me. Drew has been taking care of her veteran, Henry, for many, many years now. Henry's an honorably discharged Navy veteran, suffering from some of the effects of Agent Orange in Vietnam. And without her support, Henry may not even be with us today. And she makes sure every day of his life is profitable and helpful and helpful, and she is my hero.
Thank you very much. This is overwhelming. I just want to thank you, and I just enjoy taking care of my husband.
Okay, we're on the homestretch. The next one that we're going to proclaim will be Emergency Medical Services Week. I'm going to ask Murray Blakeney, John McLaughlin, Lynette Scherter, Chief Kennedy, Chief Coyle, and Chief Fuller to come on up with me. Whereas the providers of emergency medical services devote their lives to saving others. And whereas the providers of emergency medical services include medical directors, physicians, nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, educators, and administrators. And whereas the residents and visitors of Palm Beach County rely on the knowledge, skill, and dedication of these professionals in times of emergency. And whereas education, prevention, and advances in emergency medical care increase the number of lives saved each year. And whereas residents and visitors value and support the establishment of exemplary emergency medical services in Palm Beach County, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners, assembled in regular session, that May 15th to 21st, in Palm Beach County, is Emergency Medical Services Week.
Thank you, Mayor. This year marks the 47th Annual National EMS Week. In 1974, President Gerald Ford authorized EMS Week to celebrate EMS practitioners and the important work they perform throughout their communities. Each year, a theme is provided. This year, the theme is Rising to the Challenge. Our men and women do an exceptional job fulfilling this theme, but can only be accomplished with support. Many resources contribute to our infrastructure, our EMS infrastructure, allowing us to provide exceptional care in Palm Beach County. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, County Administrator, Attorneys, Dispatchers, the EMS Office at Emergency Management, Emergency Management, Local Department of Health, Healthcare District, EMS Council, Hospital Emergency Response Coalition, EMS Medical Directors, Secondary, Special Secondary COPCN holders, volunteers, and our hospital partners all throughout the county. However, the most valued partner in our system is the patients we serve. We appreciate you relying on us to render care in your most significant time of need. On behalf of all of the EMS providers in Palm Beach County, we proudly accept this proclamation and appreciate the recognition. Our teams will continue rising to the challenge, providing exceptional care all throughout Palm Beach County. Thank you.
Beach County Chapter, Representatives, and Members of the Drowning Prevention Coalition, please come forward?
As Commissioner Sacks mentioned earlier, water is an important resource for our residents in Palm Beach County. So is water safety for our residents. And so this proclamation declaring May 2022 as National Water Safety Month. Whereas the state of Florida recognizes May as Water Safety Month, and Palm Beach County recognizes it locally. And whereas our beautiful coastal and inland beaches and waterways represent a world-renowned recreational resource with millions of people, both residents and visitors, drawn each year for water and beach activities. And whereas the aquatic environment has dangers, particularly rip currents that can be effectively managed through public awareness and the vigilance of professional lifeguards. And whereas the Palm Beach County Parks and Recreation Department features 14 oceanfront beach parks and three waterway inlet beaches staffed by ocean rescue personnel who provide drowning prevention, water rescues, and emergency medical services, serving nearly 6 million beach patrons annually, as well as 15 boat ramp parks. And whereas for reasons of public safety, an annual reminder of the potential hazards associated with the aquatic environment is appropriate at the commencement of the busy summer beach and water recreational season. And whereas residents and visitors alike must remember to never swim alone, always swim near a lifeguard, never drink alcohol before swimming or boating, respect the power of the surf, and learn to swim from a qualified instructor. And whereas May 21st through 27, 2022, is National Safe Boating Week. And whereas May 23rd to 30th, 2022, is National Beach Safety Week. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session this third day of May 2022, that May 2022, in Palm Beach County, is hereby proclaimed National Water Safety Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard, Deputy Director Jennifer Cirillo of the Palm Beach County Parks and Recreation Department. I feel like we are kind of all pulling it together for this final proclamation. Tourism, our beaches are our number-one destination in Palm Beach County. Safety, and certainly our trauma professionals. I was also raised by two nurses, so Commissioner McKinley, I can appreciate where you're coming from. I want to thank our water-smart Palm Beach County Coalition partners, particularly Anna Stewart from the Drowning Prevention Coalition, and Elijah Virgin from St. Mary's Medical Center, trauma represented here. Center, uh, trauma represented here today. Um, I do also want to shine a spotlight quickly on our open-water lifesaving professionals. So if we are putting shout-outs for, uh, job opportunities, this is a unique profession, but it's, um, a very challenging profession. And Chase Robertson is here with us today. He is a world-class athlete. He's competed for Team USA on two occasions, uh, in Australia and South Africa, uh, to showcase his professional skills. He's an EMT, uh, professional with Palm Beach County, and he represents those that perform open-water lifesaving skills as a profession. And let me tell you, it is, it is something, uh, it is something else to behold, and they keep our public safe. We very much appreciate them. So again, it's important to emphasize to be safe in, on, and around the water, particularly as we approach the summer. Uh, please learn to swim and always swim near a lifeguard. Thank you.
So, we're breaking rules today. If you're blonde, you get three proclamations. Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
Mayor, you could be blonde. Very light. Very, very light, champagne blonde. Uh, anyways, this next proclamation is not to an office or to an association, but to one person. One person who sadly is retiring. They say that when you retire from any big corporate entity, such as government, which is a large entity, that you want to go back and do what you did before you entered. Well, this next individual was in construction. He was a construction laborer who grew up in Rhode Island, went to school in Rhode Island, and luckily came down here to Palm Beach County. He started as a corporate finance in a Fortune one-hundred company after twenty-three years of doing that to the exciting Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Industries of South Florida here in Palm Beach County. I'd like to call Mr. Glenn Jorgensen over here. Sounds like I'm calling him to the stand. Glenn, this is to you. And if I could have, uh, Ms. Baker join me here at the podium as I read this, because Ms. Baker has been so instrumental in working with you for our tourism. Tourist Development Director Glenn Jorgensen, you have been the Director of the County's Tourist Development Council for nine years, overseeing the Convention Center, Cultural Council, Discover the Palm Beaches Film and TV Commission, and Sports Commission. And under your leadership, tourism in Palm Beach County has soared, with revenues climbing from approximately twenty-six million in two thousand and thirteen to more than sixty-five million in twenty-twenty-two. And hotel rooms growing from thirteen thousand seven hundred to eighteen thousand four hundred. And whereas Glenn Jorgensen served at the helm while the Sports Commission and County Partners planned and opened the Ballpark of the Palm Beaches, the Houston Astros and the World Series Champions, and the two thousand nineteen World Series Champions of Washington Nationals. And whereas you have overseen the launching of the Cultural Council's Concierge Program, which is an online resource for connecting residents and visitors to culture in Palm Beach County, and the Film and Television Commission's livestream on-demand video of Palm Beaches TV that is seen at Palm Beach International Airport and the Palm Beach County Convention Center. Whereas other significant tourist-related events that you helped to launch include the Boca Raton Bowl, an annual national collegiate athletic association, postseason Division One Foot- boy, I'm, I need a glass of water for all of this. Um, the Division One Football Bowl, subdivision College Football Bowl that began in two thousand and fourteen, and the Arch and Tourism Summit on Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion that was co-hosted by the Cultural Council and Discover the Palm Beaches. And whereas Glenn Jorgensen, you has dedi- you have dedicated endless hours to developing Palm Beach County as not only a world-class tourism and resort destination, but also one of the best places in the world to live, work, and play. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session this third day of May, twenty-twenty-two, that the Board hereby honors Tourist Development Director Glenn Jorgensen. Congratulations.
Glenn, there's nothing left to say except thank you for the years of service. Uh, you've been there through thick and thin. You helped guide us through, uh, COVID from the tourism side of things, working with industry, as well as the agencies you were assigned to oversee. You've done an outstanding and excellent job for the residents of Palm Beach County, as well as the tourists for Palm Beach County. And so we want to make sure when you leave us, because, you know, I kept saying, no, Glenn, one more month, one more month, one more month. But I saw the look in Helen's eyes, and I said, I won't ask for another month. So, um, I'd like to thank Helen too, because she's been there with you. And so she's not here today, but I hope that she sees this and knows that we appreciate her and her support of you. So here's to you, and make sure you, uh, use it in good health, too, Palm Beach County, uh, cups, for one for you, one for Helen, along with other Palm Beach County goodies. So don't forget us.
As I become a tourist.
Yes.
It'd be great. Thank you. I just want to say one word. It has absolutely been a pleasure and a privilege to work for the county. Nine years, as many of you know, I worked for Motorola for twenty-five. Transitioning from the corporate world to the government world was different, but it's still a business. And we ran it as a business, and I, I really have appreciated these nine years. Had a great time, had great agencies to work with. Uh, as, as Commissioner Sacks said, all these agencies and all the leadership and the people that are in those agencies and the industry is just an amazing industry that, uh, I know will be around Palm Beach County for many, many years. So thank you for the privilege of being able to be your Tourist Development Director. Thank you.
Okay, that completes our proclamations for the day, and we thank everybody for participating, and certainly there was a lot to celebrate today. We have a little bit of, uh, housekeeping here. We have the Clerk of Courts in the, in the room, and so we want to make sure we get everything perfect. And so when we did the, uh, amendment to the agenda where we added five C, one A, and B onto the agenda after consent, I'm not sure if we got a vote to approve the agenda, so let's just go ahead and take care of that. Commissioner Kerner, I believe you had made a motion to approve. Uh, Vice Mayor Weiss, I believe you were second. I'm going to call a vote, all in favor, all opposed. Show it as Commissioner Sacks, can we just have you say yay? Commissioner Sacks, how are you over there? Just say yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. We have a seven-oh vote to approve the agenda. All right, we're going to move on. So now that I have introduced the fact that our clerk is in the room, would you please join us, Clerk Abruzzo? We are ready to hear from you as you present the Palm Beach County Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
You only have twenty minutes.
Yeah. You have three minutes. Can't time them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. I will, I will be prudent in, in my remarks. Uh, before I begin, I just would like to take a point of personal privilege to thank the recognition by Commissioner Kerner and, uh, Commissioner McKinley for allowing me to stand with you in that incredible proclamation honoring the, the heroes that take care of our heroes. I could see nothing more important. I really appreciate it. Uh, and Julie, if, if they have any hiccups, uh, it never happened. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Weinroth, Vice Mayor Weiss, and the entire Board of County Commissioners for setting aside time today to review the county's financial position in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one and highlight some trends we saw throughout the year. I'd like to thank County Administrator Verdina Baker and her team for outstanding work, or an outstanding working relationship between our two offices this past year. Our team could not produce these reports without the assistance of your staff, and I appreciate your continued partnership, Administrator Baker. Now let's take a look at the county's financial health in the past fiscal year. Commissioners, you all should have a copy of our award-winning Checks and Balances Guide in your folder. This guide allows, also known as the popular Annual Financial Report, has been produced by our team since two thousand and six. Checks and Balances is the easy-to-read version of the county's annual comprehensive financial report, which our team also produces on the county's behalf. You can find both reports, as well as other financial reports produced by our team, on the Finance section of our website. Checks and Balances has won fifteen consecutive awards for outstanding achievement in popular annual financial reporting from the Government Financial Office Officers Association, or GFOA. Speaking of GFOA, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report has won the GFOA Award of Excellence for thirty-two years, basically, uh, before I was born. And your budget award has won GFOA honors for thirty-five years. Congratulations to everyone involved on this outstanding accomplishment. For those of you watching at home who would like to find the Checks and Balance Guide to reference some of these charts that I will review today, visit our website at www.mypalmbeachclerk.com/pafr, PAFR. Select the Fiscal Year Two Thousand Twenty-One Edition, which is the first link on the page. I'll give everyone a minute to get out their guides, then we'll move into review. Let's start with the last page of Checks and Balances, the County Statement of Net Position. The county's net position is essentially its net worth. Please go to page eighteen of Checks and Balances to see the entire chart. For those watching online, you'll want to look at page nineteen of your PDF. Your net position is the difference between the county's assets minus its liabilities. Basically, everything the county owns minus everything it owes. The financial picture for Palm Beach County was excellent in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, with its net position increased, increasing by five hundred and forty-one million, or sixteen point one percent, compared to the previous fiscal year. The main driver of this increase in net worth was a decrease in the county's share of net pension liabilities for its defined benefits retirement plans. If you look at the net pension liability line in the chart, you'll see the fiscal year two thousand twenty total was nearly one point nine billion dollars, compared with just five hundred and seventy-two million in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. The decrease of nearly one point three billion in net pension liabilities made possible by actual plan investment returns exceeding expectations was a significant factor in the reduction of total liabilities in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, which in turn contributed to an increase in total net position. In addition to the increase in county net position, there were several other factors that contributed to Palm Beach County's financial well-being in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. The largest source of county revenue is proper, property taxes. And if you look at page ten of Checks and Balances, you'll see that Palm Beach County set a record in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one with a total of one point three four billion in property tax collections. The chart on the left side of your screen shows the increase in property tax revenue fiscal year since two thousand seventeen. One factor in the rise in property tax revenues are county's hot housing market. If you look at page six of Checks and Balances, you'll see that the median price, sales price of a home in Palm Beach County hit a record high of five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in two thousand twenty-one, an increase, and really an incredible increase of twenty-four percent from the previous year. Our office recorded eighty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty-seven deeds and seventy-six thousand five hundred and ninety-three mortgages in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. The number of these deeds filed with our office increased, again, r- really unprecedented, twenty point seven percent from the previous year, while the number of recorded mortgages increased fourteen point eight percent from the previous year. One other metrics that hit a record in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one was sales tax revenue. If you could go to the next slide. Oh, no, you're good, good. Sales tax revenues reached their high, highest levels in more than a decade in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, with an eighteen percent increase in collections compared to last year. Of the two hundred and one point six million in sales tax collections, nearly one hundred and two million is straight sales tax collections, while approximately ninety-nine million is designated for the county infrastructure repairs as part of the penny sales tax increase approved by voters in two thousand sixteen. It's worth noting that the Consumer Price Index rose nine point eight percent for our region from February twenty twenty-one to February twenty twenty-two. According to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics report that track prices in the Miami-Fort Lauderdale-West Palm Beach region, the price increases factored into high sales tax collections that we saw in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, in addition to the rise in consumer spending after COVID-nineteen vaccination rates increased and COVID restrictions began to loosen. We expect this increase in sales tax collection to continue into fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, since a significant portion of the CPI increase occurred in the later part of the twenty twenty-one calendar year. As you know, the county's fiscal year ends September thirtieth, so the price increases we've seen this past few months would not be reflected in this chart. These two charts, charts, illustrate just a couple of ways that Palm Beach County has recovered from the pause in travel, both for the business and for leisure caused by the pandemic. And it's only fitting that Glenn Jorgensen got honored today, uh, for his retirement. If you look at the collections of gas tax and tourist development tax highlighted on page eleven, you'll see both collections rebounding after a decline in fiscal year two thousand twenty. It's worth noting that the uptick in tourist development tax collec- collection in fiscal years two thousand twenty-one is higher than the fiscal year two thousand seventeen, when bed, when bed tax collections began their upward trend before dropping in fiscal year two thousand twenty due to the global pandemic. Gas tech, tax collections have generally held stable before fiscal year two thousand twenty, which fell that year to forty-seven point seven million. Fiscal year two thousand twenty-one did see a slight increased, increase of almost four percent to forty-nine point five million. We will watch these collections in the next few years with an increase in the number of tourists and new residents moving to our state and to our county. Pages thirteen and fourteen of Checks and Balances highlights the county's expenses. Page thirteen provides breakdowns of operating costs by department districts, including fire, rescue, and the county library system, county departments, and the, and the constitutional offices, including our office. You can even see how much a department or constitutional office costs per taxpayer. For some offices, like the Clerk's Office, the average cost per taxpayer only reflects the county-funded portion of the budget. It's worth noting that the budget amount in the operating cost chart only reflects the taxpayer-funded portion of the budget. It does not include revenue from grants or user fees. If you turn to page fourteen, you can see where the money goes. Public safety continues to be the county's largest expense, with law enforcement and fire rescue services taking fifty-three percent of the budget. And that is highly typical in large metropolitan areas. As you also see on page fourteen, public safety expenses decreased in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, which is directly related to the decrease in pension liability I mentioned earlier. Expenses without these pension costs factored in can be found in more detailed and in the more detailed Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. The county continues to save for emergencies, as demonstrated in our reserve analysis chart on page fifteen of Checks and Balances. Overall reserves of the county increased by just over seventy-nine million. The two categories with significant changes include an increase in the county's reserve of approximately thirty-two million, and other operating reserves increased just over fifty-four million dollars. The increase is particular, in this particular reserve, is partially attributed to funds received for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Your total reserve balance as of September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one was one point one billion dollars, with the reserve for capital projects compromising the majority of the reserve balance. You have more than five hundred and thirty-eight million in reserves for capital projects, mostly for road improvements. As Palm Beach County Treasurer and CFO- As Palm Beach County Treasurer and CFO, our office is responsible for investing taxpayer money until it's needed to pay county expenses. For our team, investing in the stock market or ETFs are not an option. The county investment policy developed by your investment policy committee and our office's investment professionals limits the investment of taxpayer money to highly qualified fixed income securities, like bonds, certificates, and certificates of deposits. And I just would like to thank Vice Mayor Greg Weiss for his service on the Investment Policy Committee. Our guiding principles for the county's portfolio are simple: preserve principle foremost, ensure funds are available to meet county expenses, and earn a market rate of return. Our team is proud to have earned certification from the Center of Fiduciary Excellence, also known as Cifex, for the 13th consecutive year. This important certification shows that we adhere to a high standards of best fiduciary practices when investing Palm Beach County taxpayer money. If you turn to page 16 of Checks and Balances, you can see the portfolio allocations as of September 30, 2021. Most of the portfolio allocation is in two areas: money markets and certificate of deposits. Though we do plan on expanding the portfolio's investment in marketable securities, as well as Israeli bonds, thanks to the changes policies you approved in December. The cumulative income chart shows the steady increase in both investment income and interest income earned since fiscal year 2016. During fiscal year 2021, our team's management and county investment portfolio generated a total of 1.06%, earning $28 million in investment income for Palm Beach County taxpayers and residents. The last part of Checks and Balances that I highlight today focus on debt, specifically how much debt Palm Beach County has borrowed to pay for large projects. Page 17 shows two charts: the county's outstanding debt from fiscal year 2017 to fiscal year 2021, and a model showing future debt service payments if no additional debt is added. The page also shows some of the activities for fiscal year 2021, including issuing $51 million in public improvement revenue bonds for the Supervisor of Elections, New Operations Center, and Warehouse, and a series of refunding bonds that allow the county to borrow money at lower interest rates now to pay off higher interest rates from when the bonds were issued. Palm Beach County has consistently earned a AAA rating, the highest you can receive from independent rating agencies based on the county's likeliness to repay on its borrowed money. Because of your AAA rating, you're able to borrow money at a very low interest rate. Before I conclude, Mr. Mayor, I just would like to highlight my staff. They are incredible. They work so hard. From the Finance Department, I see Paul, Rita, Tracy, Felicia, John, and Shannon was here, of course. They do such an outstanding work, and we wouldn't be where we are today without them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. That's a very comprehensive report. And I know we have a couple of our members up here and would like to ask you a couple of questions. Commissioner Bernard, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Clerk of Bruza, I really appreciate your presentation and knowing that you have a great staff and team to work with you. Just one question on, I know it's, I think it's slide three. Can you kind of like go into the reduction in the net pension liability a little bit? So, because I see that there is a change from 2020.
Sure. So, what has happened because of the increase in investments, the performance of the portfolio from FRS, they've been able to pay down the pension liabilities, which the contributions then become less. So, that has really taken off. If you want more detail, I know, Paul. He said I said it right.
Okay, so that's really from the state pension?
Maybe my first year, but I know.
So, but it's from the state pension?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Clerk of Bruza. Appreciate the presentation. And first, before I ask my question, though, I do want to recognize your staff. I have the opportunity, as you mentioned, serving on the Investment Policy Board to interact with a number of them, and highly qualified individuals that are really working hard to protect the assets of Palm Beach County and look for opportunities to increase them as well. So, thank you for that. My question is on slide six, and we're dealing with the sales tax revenue. Curious as to the impact of, I know, you know, Florida implemented the online sales tax collection, and what that has contributed overall to our sales tax here in Palm Beach County?
It has gone up. I can get you exact figures. We can pull that from the online, and I'll have it to your office today.
Okay, I appreciate that.
It will be in the straight sales tax portion, the dark blue portion, but I will pull the exact figure today.
Okay, thank you.
Question. I know that we're going to have a tax holiday on gas tax coming up in October. Does that impact the local option gas tax? Or is that just the state gas tax?
It's state. When they have to look it up, it makes me feel better.
If you can just get back and just answer on that, that'd be fine. And as you know, this body is considering a potential ask of our residents in November if they would want to sign on to a $200 million bond for housing and potentially a $100 million bond for environment. I see there's a falloff in our debt service payments. Can you, on page 17, just let us know what that drop-off is between '23, '24? And I guess, as it goes down, there's a little bump up there, but about how much is dropping off over the next five years?
So, I will get you the exact figures on that chart, but that pretty much highlights right where we're at. Obviously, if that is implemented, you have full payoff of debt approaching about '24, '24, '29. So, that chart will readjust based on, if that provision passes.
Okay. Do we do anything to retire debt early? If it's beneficial to us to, again, I mean, we're all on the Solid Waste Authority also, and we're retiring debt to make it less costly going forward?
So, as mentioned, what I have seen since my time in office, and I'll get somebody to answer that's been here longer to me, if we have a better interest rate comes out on some of your debt, we will move into that new security to alleviate the higher interest rate.
But from the past, have we ever retired debt early?
Yeah, to our knowledge, we haven't retired debt early.
Very good. Thank you, Clerk. Okay, Commissioner Sacks, you're up.
Well, someone who has known Mr. Bruzo as a state rep, state senator, and now clerk of the court, you've done an amazing job. So, I'm very pleased to see how we're doing with regard, as a county, to unemployment, to our investments. And I look forward to your continuing leadership as we go into the next couple of years. I know you took office during COVID, which was very, very challenging, but I can see that we're just growing at an exponential rate. So, keep up the good work, Clerk.
Thank you, Commissioner. And our time on the floor of the Senate together going over the state budget definitely played into some of our abilities, or my ability to read this stuff here. So, appreciate it, Commissioner, always Senator Sacks.
Commissioner McKinley?
Thank you. Good to see you, Senator. And we have the type of clerk of court who will literally give you the jacket off his back. So, appreciate your service. I have two questions. Number one is your focus, the slide you had focused on county operating costs, where you average out the average cost per taxpayer. And we are certainly all supportive of public safety up here and our first responders, having just received a copy of the sheriff's draft budget and seeing an increase of 6.79% on his budget request. And last year, that percent change was 3%. And knowing that part of House Bill 3 that was passed this year includes a greater employer contribution rate into law enforcement's FRS accounts, I'd love to see how those two things will affect that number if there's any way your staff can do a projected chart on how that would change those numbers. And then the second question I had, or I guess that wasn't really a question. The first question I have, how much, you know, I look at these sales tax collections. I would love to know how much we collect and send to Tallahassee versus what they actually send back to us, and how big of a donor county we actually are. I know you can't answer that. That'll be something you have to get back to us, but I would love to see those numbers. You know, we see so much legislation come through where they're, and I have traveled through our small rural counties. I know the financial restrictions that they have. I know they need our help. But every time they do something like an additional homestead exemption, they make all of those small counties whole. They refund what those counties are going to lose based on what their projected loss revenue would be as a result of those exemptions. But they don't do that for us. And so, that makes us a donor county, and I would just love to know how much of a donor county we are.
Thank you, Commissioner. And you're asking the question of someone who helps lead a donor office to our state. I was only smirking not out of sarcasm because it's an excellent question, but yourself, from working in legislative affairs to Commissioner Kerner, Commissioner Bernard, and Senator Sacks, we all know well how much we are, or the struggles of being a donor county. And I would be pleased to research and find that numbers and get it to you as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any questions. Mr. Clerk, I did want to say, in my experience over the last almost two years, that under your leadership, the clerk and comptroller's office has become much more forward-facing agency and office. I can't think of a day that goes by where one of our constituent issues or one of my constituent issues doesn't involve having to work with directly the clerk and comptroller's office or it's related to the issue tangentially. And so, for me, and on behalf of District 3, it's been a really wonderful experience working with you and your senior staff and everybody that works in your office, from the minutes clerk to the VAB board, to the executive administration officers. So, I know you haven't been in office for that long. It's been, probably felt like, a while. But it really is, there's a new spirit of service and cooperation and intensity and direction and focus from your office. And I know that's to your credit and to the credit of your senior leadership, but also each and every deputy clerk and comptroller that works in your office. So, thank you for what you do, and thank you for what your team does. And I'll offer a motion to receive and file, 5A1.
I have a motion to receive and file by Commissioner Kerner, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed? Show that as being approved, seven to zero. Thank you so much for the report, and we'll look forward to those follow-up pieces of information going forward.
You will receive it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Have a great day. Okay, we are moving on. We are now moving to 5B1, and it's our pleasure to welcome Superintendent Burke to our chamber.
Good morning. Pleasure to be here. Commissioner, Mayor Weinroth, Vice Mayor Weiss, Commissioners, County Administrator Baker, thanks for having me. You know, I've been here about, I guess it was four years ago last time we had an agenda item, and you're going to see us every four years. We did prepare a brief presentation, if that's a pleasure of the commission.
I'm not sure if it's really necessary, since this is really a ministerial capacity that we're going to, unless, Commissioner McKinley, you feel the need to have a presentation?
I think if we're authorizing this on the ballot, we should see where the money has been spent before we authorize putting it on the ballot.
I stand corrected. All right, let's have a presentation.
Thanks. So, I'll be quick, okay? We're, obviously, we're looking at the November 8 general election. We'd like to have this ballot question presented to the voters. And this is to continue. The key word today is going to be continue. Let's see. I need to continue to advance the slides. There we go. All right, so, state statute enables the school board to turn to the voters for an operating, this is for our operating budget, to meet critical operating needs through a property tax levy. And we have been doing this since 2010. It started with a quarter mill. In 2010, we were in the Great Recession. A lot of districts, we were experiencing funding cuts. We had lost over $1,000 per student. And we saw districts around the country sacrificing arts programs and music programs and things like that. So, our board had the wisdom to say, look, we don't want that to happen in Palm Beach County. We value these programs. And we went to the voters for a quarter mill to save jobs. And that pays for now, currently, a little over 750 full-time teaching positions in art, music, PE, choice programs, and career and technical education. So, it's very important to us. We did that in 2010, 2014. In 2018, we were faced with some additional challenges. Teacher pay in Florida was one of the lowest states in the nation. And it still has not really gotten a whole lot better. We had some more concerns around the mental health of our students and security in the wake of the Stoneman Douglas tragedy. So, we turned to voters, and we asked them to up the ante. And we went from a quarter mill to a full mill. And we were very specific in the ballot language how these dollars would be used, and we've always had independent oversight in place. So, we are fortunate. Voters, 72% approved our question in 2018. And really, I'm here today to say we would like to continue what we have, the same one mill for the same programs going forward for another four years. This is the ballot language itself. There's one slight difference from the 2018 ballot language, and that's where this used to read district-operated schools. It now just simply reads public schools, and that's because we now include charter schools. The law has changed since the last referendum. And then also, we are now currently sharing the proceeds of our existing referendum due to a legal ruling. So, that's one thing I'll be pointing out to the voters that this, when we say public schools, that means both district-operated and charter schools within Palm Beach County, which there's about 50. How the money will be spent, again, it'll continue to protect those 750-plus positions. A big part of it, about half of the money, goes to improving teacher pay in Palm Beach County. So, what we're able to do to try to retain our teachers and recruit them, for one year of experience, a teacher sees an additional $1,000 supplement to their salary. The supplement does qualify towards their FRS pension benefit. And then when they get to five years, from five to nine years, they get additional $5,000 per year. And then at 10 years or more, it's $10,000 per year. So, our teachers are receiving these dollars now. I'm sure they've grown pretty dependent on these dollars, especially with the, you know, the rising cost of housing inflation. So, it's very important that we try to continue this. It has been successful in bringing teachers to Palm Beach County and hopefully getting them to stay in the profession. And then the other two pieces were the mental health. We added a mental health professional to every one of our schools, and that remains in place. And then we grew the size of our police force, and we bought some more security equipment, those type of initiatives, just to keep schools safe. I think I've covered this part as far as how the teachers receive the money. I mentioned charter schools. So, charter schools by law will share, based on their pro-rata share of our enrollment. So, currently, we have about 22,000 kids in charter schools. That's about 12% of our total district enrollment. So, they'll get 12% of the funds. And that equates to about $25 million per year. And then the oversight, we have an independent committee, all citizens, and they meet quarterly. They review how every dollar is spent. We have a very squeaky-clean track record that we have adhered to our promise to the voters to only spend these dollars as stipulated in ballot language. That will continue, and the charter schools will be subject to the same independent review. So, that's it. That's the quick presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Commissioner Kerner, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. And Superintendent Burke, thank you for your time here today. I don't want to distract from the issue that's before us, but I did, similar to Clerk of Bruza, I wanted to commend you on your leadership of the district under difficult circumstances. It's oftentimes not just about the chief executive, but who you surround yourself with. And I think you guys did a wonderful hire and chief ceremony. I'm excited for the future of the law enforcement agency under your command. And working with your chief of staff, Mr. Jay Bajis, has been a true delight in helping resolve constituent issues that kind of cross over from county government to the school district. And as a product of the school district and county resident and local leader, I can tell you that I'm happy to offer the motion to authorize this. I'm happy to vote for it. And I think that it's certainly money that will be very well spent on one of the most important governmental missions and functions that we have as a community. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
All right. I'm going to accept that motion. I have a second by the Vice Mayor. We're going to continue with our conversation. Commissioner McKinley?
Yes, thank you. You know, it is, it is one thing to collect the revenues and to hire the staff and to keep the programs running. Do you see that it has made a difference in the performance of our students? I mean, that's the most important thing we need to share with the voters.
Absolutely. I mean, we're an A-rated district, which as a large district in the state, that's not easy. All of it is paying huge dividends. The teacher pay was critical to keep people in the profession. It's hard, you know, there's fewer teachers coming out of college wanting, planning to be a teacher, so we're trying to hang on to the ones we have. The mental health professionals, you know, we, we added that before COVID, not knowing that the pandemic was coming, and they are busier than ever because our students did come back to us after being at home for that extended period of time with more challenges as far as, you know, so it's not, and we have the mental health professionals. We also use some of these funds to contract with local providers, mental health agencies, that when students need, that we, we call it multi-tiered systems of support. If they need more than what we can provide, then we connect them with the right services. So school security hasn't, you know, that's still very important to us. All of it is critical to have. Our choice programs is really something we're proud of with over 330 choice programs, and I think that's one of the things, it's a strength of Palm Beach County schools that we want to continue to build on and grow, and making sure that we're preparing the next workforce. And those technical ed programs are just, you know, becoming more and more in demand, and that's where we're seeing more and more of the well-paying jobs. So every dollar I spent here helps support our mission.
And Mr. Burke, we have an item a little bit further on in the agenda here. We're approving a budget amendment for the Sheriff's Department to move a little bit of money around so he can contract and help provide some backup services to the school district police. Are the types of revenues that are collected under this additional mill, are those the types of uses that you spend that money on?
Yes. We, you know, we had a police force before this referendum, but we've grown the size. We've nearly doubled it, and we are, we are struggling with some vacancies right now. We're, I think we're at 58 vacancies, and I'm hoping that our new Chief Mooney can help me address that. But in the interim, we have partnered with both the sheriff and a few of the municipalities around the county to provide on a contract basis, school resource officers. So yes, these monies, if they're not going towards the position, if I have the vacant position, sometimes I have to redirect the vacant position salary and benefits to help cover the contracted service.
Right, and I look forward this Thursday, traveling to Orlando with some of your team to look at the community's school and schools program that they have up there, see if we can replicate it here. So you are definitely an out-of-the-box leader, and I appreciate your service, and three kids travel through your public school system, all in choice programs, all international baccalaureate students. One got her associate's degree, which was a tough road, but she got her associate's degree this weekend. Another one got a 4.0 this semester in her criminal justice program, and I've got one looking at opening his own catering business up in the Panhandle and all products of your public schools. I appreciate you dealing with me, asking you to do this presentation and answer a few questions. As you know, the legislature has tied your hands in how much you can go out and promote this type of program, so I think anytime you have a stage to do a public presentation at the request of another elected body, you definitely need to take advantage of that.
I agree. I welcome the opportunity. It's great to hear the testimonial. Florida, I should have mentioned, we're 45th in the nation in terms of funding per student. So, you know, 45th isn't good enough for Palm Beach County, and that's where our local voters have been so supportive to provide a lot of things we normally wouldn't have, and I think, I think you see the results. And I am incredibly proud of the team we've put together, and I'm taking advantage of this opportunity to kind of take a fresh look, and I am interested in new programs and doing things. If we can do things better, great. You know, you guys know my history, like 25 years with the district, primarily as the CFO, so I really relish this opportunity and am honored to get the chance to serve as superintendent, and I want to make the most of the time I have to try to continue to advance our, our good cause here. So, thank you.
And to hang the help-wanted sign, they need teachers, bus drivers, crossing guards, and every other school personnel position you guys are definitely hiring. Thank you, Mr. Burke.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Superintendent Burke, I want to thank you for being here. It's, it's been a really tough year for, for our school board members, and so I want to personally thank all of the, the school board members for their hard work during this, through COVID. So I'll make sure, I'll name them, you know, our school board chair, Frank Barberi, the vice chair, Karen Brill, Erica Whitfield, Alexandra Ayala, Barbara McQuinn, Marcia Andrews, and Dr. Debbie Robinson. During the past years, I've had the chance to do the Ethical Governance Day, going to the different schools, and the past, the last one that I went to was at Dwyer, and it was just a, I had such a phenomenal experience, meeting the students and some of the teachers. You know, our school board member, Erica Whitfield, and Dr., and our judge who handles that program, it's just, it's so important for, for us to continue to provide ethical governance, you know, for them to see some of our elected officials. I know, Commissioner Kerner, we were at Spanish River also, and I've been at West Boca and also Atlantic High School, because the kids need to continue to see us as their elected officials and for them to ask us questions. And, and finally, I have two kids who are in the art program, one's at Dreyfus and one's at Bach, and we need this to continue to have our kids to have the proper education because art is so important, the teacher retention, and also for us to continue to provide public safety for our students and also to address mental health need. This is truly needed, and I do hope that the voters support this. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll share your gratitude with the school board. I appreciate that.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Superintendent Burke, for being here today and making this presentation for us. I want to send my kudos to you as well and to your staff. Last week, I had an opportunity to visit North Grade Elementary in Lake Worth, which is a new school in District Two, or new, new to me, and so I try and make an effort to go out and visit the schools and talk about the resources the county provides or can provide to the families at times if they need them. And so Ms. Patterson was just very welcoming, and, I mean, the knowledge of the situations of the families there. I mean, the principals are really engaged, and, and so I just, I want to acknowledge that. I'm following up, though, on a question that was asked earlier of Clerk Abruzzo. Is it the same case for our school district? Are you, is there such a thing as a donor?
Donor, yes, there is. We use that same term, that we're a donor county. Education in Florida is funded through a formula. It's the Florida Education Finance Program, FFP Formula, and it basically pools, well, they set our tax rates for us, and that generates the local share. The primary, the bulk of our taxes are set by the legislature. It's called required local effort. And then we're funded on a per-student basis, so say roughly $8,000 per student, and depending if you're kind of a property-rich county like Palm Beach County, you know, in a more affluent county, a lot of strong tax base, you end up just paying more locally. So we're about a 70%, 30% split, in rough numbers, I need to verify it, but it's usually about 70/30, which means we're generating of that $8,000 per kid, we're paying about 70% of it locally, and the state's kicking in the remaining 30%. If you went to a more rural county with less of a tax base, you might see the inverse. You could see maybe 10% local, 90% state. So I would say the difference, you know, I guess it was an ideal situation, we'd all be about 50/50, and we're 70/30.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Superintendent, it's no secret, we have a housing crisis here in our county. Workforce, affordable housing, obviously, is impacting your ability to hire, as you said, police officers with your 58 vacancies. I'm sure it's impacting your professional staff as well. One of the facts that I had brought to the table on one of our last meetings is the fact that 22% of our adults in Palm Beach County are functionally illiterate, and that 40% of the students who are arriving at fourth grade are not reading at grade level. These are key indicators of their future, and obviously, if we're going to be able to attack the affordability of housing, people have to be able to earn a good salary. What can we do to take this number, which, you know, 60% to me is failing?
Yeah.
How do we get our literacy rate up to something that I would call at least a C+?
I agree. That's our greatest challenge. You know, that was, we've just, our previous five-year plan, which has just recently come to a conclusion, that was one of the key metrics, to get third-grade reading up to 75%. We did not really move the needle. I think we have to start earlier, you know, if possible. As Superintendent, I get to sit on Children's Service Council. I thought it was very interesting. I was hearing a report there, and they, they find that 52% of the students are ready for kindergarten when they arrive, and then we get to third-grade reading, we're at 54%, and I suspect there's a pretty strong correlation there. But we have recently implemented a new curriculum for K2, K2 reading, or K3 reading, I should say, that's more kind of, it's phonics-based. It's kind of going back, I think, to the way I was taught how to read and sounding out the words. And we call it, it's the foundation. So we're going back to like the foundations of reading and really stressing that. So I've been impressed with like the training that's been provided our teachers this year, the new materials, and it sounds simple, but I hold some hope that we're going to see benefit from that, going back to like that phonics base where they're sounding out the words. Our sales tax is paid for smart panels in all our classrooms. They're using those with fidelity across our elementary classrooms. So I'd say first, we're going to teach it a little differently, and then if there's anything we can do to increase pre-K program availability across our county, if we could start, you know, with some students, they just show up to us and they haven't had the same blessings or experiences where they're being read to, or the vocabulary is limited. So to me, I think the real long-term answer would be to start earlier. And we have some BPK programs, you know, we have a few district Montessori programs that start at age four. Those students are in better shape by third grade when they start at four, and we can show that. So
I appreciate that.
That's a heavy lift financially, but
I'm going to give you an opportunity to talk a little bit about the presentation you made to the BDB just at our last meeting with respect to what you're doing at Roosevelt High, trying to revitalize that school, creating the STEAM program there, hopefully as a attraction, turning the tide around so that there's not flight away from the school, but people coming back?
Yes. So the school board's mission is to educate, affirm, and inspire each student equity-embedded school system. And one of the things I'm excited about is what we're doing at Roosevelt. Roosevelt Elementary School is a school that has, you know, it's a challenging, it's under-enrolled school. They only have about 280 students. The school's built for 800. We'd like to attract more kids to the school. And the principal and the team have, I think, done the best with the, the resources they have. We feel like we could provide more resources. We'd like to bring in an arts program to go with music, and we're modeling it. The Conservatory School is kind of an interesting case study, where we had a very strong principal, Mr. Terry Stupus, that kind of bucked the system a little bit and did her own thing, kind of a little bit of a, like renegade, and she, she proved her point, that she implemented what she calls, what's known as project-based learning, where it's a different approach to teaching, where the kids kind of see the value in what they're learning, how it impacts the world around them. And also, it's part of that's granting the teachers greater freedom. Because accountability is so front and center in everything we do, with our schools being graded and our teachers being evaluated based on the student's performance, I feel like we may be a little guilty of over, you know, stressing the standards and worrying about the tests too much, and as a result, maybe we've crushed some of the joy of learning and the joy of teaching and some of the creative freedom that teachers used to enjoy. So that's, that's one example. Roosevelt Elementary, we hope to, to kind of follow the success of the Conservatory School, grant the principal and staff some more freedom, and we are trying to raise some additional resources so we could put in bioluminescent musical instruments, revamp the campus a little bit to make it just a little more attractive and fun place to be. And, you know, I appreciate the opportunity here to share, share more of our plans at the school board. You know, we have a great partnership with the county here, and I really want to continue that. I do want to take, well, I had the mic, just an opportunity to thank you all and County Administrator Baker for the Wi-Fi mesh network that you continue to invest in to help make sure that all our students have fast, reliable, high-speed internet available to them. You know, I got to go to Glade View when we kicked it off and handed out the extenders, and that's going to continue to grow and really help level the playing field in a meaningful way. And when I meet with other superintendents around the country, they don't have the benefit of that. Like when that, that raises, you know, people's ears perk up when I say, hey, my county's really made a big investment here. So we, again, we are like fortunate to be in Palm Beach County. That's going to be awesome to see. You know, it's going to, first phase is 25,000 families will now have, and then we're going to grow from there, and it's just going great. So thank you for that.
Yeah, one of, one of the benefits of the pandemic, if there's benefits of it, obviously, is the investment in broadband, which will have long-term impacts on business and education. So I'm, I'm happy for that. Commissioner Marino, you're up.
Thank you, and I would be remiss if I didn't bring up this topic. Superintendent Burke, thank you for being here, and I know you and I have spoken about this, but since you, since we don't normally have the school district in front of us, you know, as a multi-letter athlete in high school and as still as a professional athlete today, our physical health of our children is failing. We're 47 out of 50 developing countries in our physical health of our kids. If we don't do something about that now, the burden on society in the future, bad enough that they've got debt that they're going to get now, they don't even have the ability to go out and work because they're disabled, which of course, that was just a massive jump. But we need to do something to address the physical health of our kids, and it has to start in the school system, and I implore you to do something to make sure that it's continuous, not just in the grade schools and in, in middle school, but also in high school, because I know that you don't need many credits in high school, and we really need to get kids off of these and outside. I, I mean, at the end of the day, when I was a kid, it was mom was standing at the door yelling, "Everybody come inside," because we were all outside
Right.
running around doing everything, and, you know, we need to get back to that. We need to get our kids moving, and when they are moving, their brains are working better. So I, I know, I sound like a broken record. It's the first thing I said when I got here a year and a half ago, but you're here. So the school board is standing in front of me. I'm saying, I'm imploring you. We need more physical education for our kids.
So I was thinking about you recently, and I was kind of the same type of kid and spent all my time outside. Now I'm spending a good portion in a dermatologist's office, but the, the, the one thing that was really kind of cool to see, we are working on a new strategic plan, and we did this thought exchange, and we had about 24,000 responses, and people could respond to this. It's kind of a survey-based thing, but people could share their thoughts, and then other people could rate those thoughts. The number one thought around what we need to do for our students was more unstructured outside activities. It was 4.1 out of 5, and that was the highest, it was tied with one other item, but anyway, the community shares your vision. The challenge with that will be the scheduling, and there's a lot of requirements that are put upon us as far as what must be in the school day, but let me work on that. I think it just intuitively
I'm happy to help.
makes sense to me, and I think our community has spoken as well, so.
I much appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Sacks?
Everybody cares, Superintendent, about education. If there's one issue that we could all pine upon for hours, it would be education, and thank you for, I'm so happy that you came from the CFO position to your position today, because I think so much of it relies on money. There's a couple of challenges that we have. Let me take specifically what my good colleague, Commissioner Marino, was talking about. I think a challenge, and I'm just going to mention about four or five of them, and then later on, your staff can probably work on some responses, but our schools need to be open later. I was on the Budget Committee for Education, and we need to make sure that the state allows our local schools to stay open later rather than lock up, and I know it's an issue of insurance, but maybe we can work on that with the staff to get, to make sure that our schools are open later for educational purposes as well as for athletics, and that may help a lot with Commissioner Marino's concerns. Secondly, with regard to some of the challenges that we have, safety at our school bus stops. I wonder, we're going to write a letter to you, but basically, you're here right now. So at some point, maybe we could have a report from your staff about the location of the school bus stops, what we can do to make them safer, and especially with the traffic intensity as it has been the last couple of months, really. And then I'd like to commend your office for putting in Haitian Creole at some of our schools. There is a law that was passed about six, seven years ago with regard to 15 global languages. One of them is Haitian Creole. I'd like to see more of an implementation of these global languages at our schools so that our students are ready for global competition. Maybe at some point, we could get a report from your staff on that. And then then I'd like to, to make sure that we have a lot of new residential area developments that are coming in the agricultural reserve. We need schools. So I want to be sure that whatever budget you have in the district, that that will encompass additional schools to keep up with the population growth and density in the agricultural reserve. So if we could have a report from your staff at some point to all of us here on the commission on those challenges, I'd be most appreciative. And then lastly, there is one person who works for the school district that wasn't mentioned, and that was the attorney who works for the school board. She does an amazing job. I know she does.
Yes.
And I just think that in these times, it's especially challenging. Thank you so much for meeting with me and my staff. And at some point, we could have these challenges noted by, by your staff to all of us in the county commission, because these are important. Thank you so much, Superintendent.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm very fortunate to work with Sean Bernard, our Board Attorney, General Counsel. So we have a part of the great team. I do want to mention real quick, Ms. Baker's been very gracious. We're going to be meeting, our team's going to be meeting with some of the county traffic engineers. We have over two thousand bus stops, so we're kind of always in some type of review process to address various concerns as the conditions change. And, but yeah, and we do a ten-year facilities plan, you know, where we do our best. We have a demographer, we project enrollment growth, and we look, you know, we have acquired some land in anticipation of future schools. There are other parts of the county where we do not have land, you know, like, like in the ag reserve. So we would have to, at some point, either buy it or have some donated to us. So, but anyway, great questions. Again, I really appreciate the collaboration and partnership we have between our two agencies. I think it serves our community better when we, when we work together.
Not done yet. Commissioner McKinley.
Yeah, I saw an opportunity to bring up an issue since you're here before us. And I know James Green was in the room, and he might be hiding behind the wall back there. Mr. Burke, a few months ago, we had a situation at an apartment complex out in the Pahokee area that we actually had to condemn the building. When I was on site that day, there were two elementary school students, brothers. One of them had been suspended, and one of them was homesick on that particular day. The apartment that they were living in, I think both boys were receiving nebulizer treatments because of the black mold on the wall. They didn't have any hot water. I'm not even sure they had running water in that unit. The water heater had exploded and flooded the apartment. You know, the mattresses they were sleeping on were riddled with mold. You can imagine the worst-case scenario. In my opinion, suspending an elementary school student and letting them spend the day in a, in a home environment like that is not the healthiest or most responsible thing for a student. If there is a way, and I don't know, maybe we already have it, if there is a way that we could have a liaison between maybe our code enforcement and our community services department with your office or with the school district, when we come across situations like that, that your team is aware of, of the living conditions that some of our students are in, and maybe alternative disciplinary action can take place, or at least an understanding that the students' teachers might have of what's going on at home, and just some, some coordinations. I'm not sure, when we shut something like that down, that their team is made aware of it.
No, I'd, I'd welcome that. I'm not, you know, I recall the apartments being shut down. I didn't know about the two students in question. I can tell you that we do everything we can to avoid suspensions at the elementary level. It's something that we track for each school. We have like a dashboard of principals, kind of key data metrics, and we, we monitor that because that's really, like, should be a last resort. We'd be happy to work with you more on that.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Superintendent, we thank you for taking the time to be here with us today. We haven't voted on your, your request yet, but we'll get to that in a second. I just wanted to let you know, during our conversation, we received a non-speaking public comment card from Melanie Nuberto, and she says, "To help support early literacy, as the mayor and superintendent discussed, I hope people will consider the public library system as a resource." On that, we have a
We have some great partnerships with the libraries.
I understand. Commissioner Kerner has made a motion to approve your request. Vice Mayor Weiss has seconded it. I'm going to look for, again, approval of the adoption of this resolution, which is ministerial in capacity under Section one zero one one point seven three, parence two, and is statutorily required for the referendum to be held. All in favor? All opposed? Show that as being approved. Seven to zero. Good luck with your referendum, especially in light of the fact that you can't put out any written information about what this is that you're asking. But good luck. All right. Very good. All right. Thank you, Superintendent. All right. We have already dealt with Item five C one. That was approved right after consent. So we're going to move on to Item five D one. This is a motion to adopt a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, supporting the expansion of roadways designated as alternate fuel corridors by the Federal Highway Administration. We have already identified Interstate ninety-five, the Turnpike State Road A one A, and this is going to be no obligation on behalf of the county. Do we need an obligation? I have a motion by Commissioner Kerner, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor? All opposed? This is approved. Seven to zero. Thank you for coming. Thanks for playing. Exactly. All right. We are now up to five E one, Facilities Development and Operations. Do I have a need for a, I have a motion by Commissioner Kerner. I have a second by Vice Mayor Weiss. This is to approve five E one A and B. Seeing no further discussion. All in favor? All opposed? You have a unanimous verdict. You may now move on. Okay, we are now at five F one. This is for the Commission on Ethics. Staff has recommended a motion to approve a preliminary reading and advertise for a public hearing on May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, at nine thirty a.m., in accordance of the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, amending Chapter two, Article five, Division eight, Palm Beach County. Commission on Ethics ordinance is amended, amending Section two point two five five, membership qualification term vacancies, providing for a saving clause, et cetera. Do we need a, I have a motion by Commissioner Kerner. I have a second by the Vice Mayor, seeing nobody lighting up light. All in favor? All opposed? You have your seven to zero vote. Be fruitful and multiply. Okay. Five G one, Community Services. All right, we have a staff recommendation to approve a sub recipient agreement with United Way. We have cards, so we will take our, do we want to have a presentation on this at all? No need for a presentation. You don't run away, chief, just in case. Don't run away.
Questions, questions.
All right. So let's, let's take our public comment. Commissioner Kerner.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. We have three comments by members of the public and two non-speaking. The first one will be Marty Latour, and followed by Ruth Magheria.
Ms. Latour, you have your three minutes.
Okay. I appreciate it. I, I was really hoping you were just going to do the same.
I tried.
You tried. You tried. Well, first of all,
Would you pull the microphone down a little bit?
Sure.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to have the people who came to support this project, which we're very, very excited about, just to stand, so you know who's all here in support of this.
Let the record show that we have a dozen people standing in support.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. And thanks for letting us speak, County Administrator Virginia Baker and commissioners. We really appreciate it. So Palm Beach County has got a lot of great things going for us to fight and alleviate hunger in Palm Beach County. And we've really come a long way. We have just a really vast network of people who are all in this fight together. We really have a great, a great team. And, and there's people outside of this state who recognizes that about Palm Beach County. So, but we can do more. We can do more. We need to do more. We also have one of the best agricultural communities here in the state of Florida. I guess we, I think we produce fifteen percent of all produce crops in, in Florida. So that's a great asset that we have. So the community kitchen that we're talking about would be able to take advantage of our agricultural community. We would be able to, the new kitchen would have the capacity to process and preserve the fresh fruits and vegetables that we're able to distribute during the summertime, but don't have in the wintertime. So we'd be able to cryo-vac them, and we have able to distribute fresh fruits, fruits and vegetable nutritious food throughout the year. We'd also be able to expand on the childhood feeding program. We'd be able to go to an after-school program where we're going to have hot meals for that, for the children. We'd also be able to expand the senior feeding program by creating these hot meals and working with community partners like Meals on Wheels to help get more food out to the seniors in our community, which is a third of those who are food insecure in our county, and the children is another third. Then another exciting part to me is that, you know, we're in the business to put ourselves out of business. We want to prevent food insecurity. And we could do some job training with this kitchen. We could culinary kitchen skills as, as well as food processing and, and production. The other thing that we'd be able to do, and hopefully we don't need to do, though, is disaster relief services. It would be very helpful in that regard. And the last thing I want to say is that it would be, it would help, wouldn't certainly completely do this, but it would help the food bank be a little bit more self-sustaining, which I think is really important for longevity, twenty, thirty years, if we don't put ourselves out of business. So I, we're really excited about this project. We've got about six managers from the food bank who wanted to come just because they're so excited about doing this. And one last point, when we searched for a new CEO over a year ago, this was our objective, is to make sure that we had a CEO who could take us to this next level of what we really need to do. And we found that in the CEO that we hired, Jamie Kendall. She's been with the food banks, thirteen, food banking for thirteen years. She knows how to start a kitchen. She knows all these government programs that she can capture to reimburse for these programs. So we're very excited about this.
Thank you, Marty. We appreciate your presentation. And of course, you know, we have the presentation that was left for us this morning, and I'll point out that more than one-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand residents in Palm Beach County still struggle with hunger. Thirty-four percent of Palm Beach County households are struggling. So we certainly understand the need, and we thank you for everything you're doing.
Great. Thank you.
All right, Mayor, following Ruth Magheria, we will have Frank Campiani.
Thank you, the Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and County Administrator. And I am going to stick to the script because I do not want to exceed my three minutes. So my name is Ruth Magheria, and I'm the Executive Director of Cross Ministries. Cross serves the hungry in Palm Beach and Martin Counties through community collaborations. And we fulfill this mission by increasing access and availability of nutritious food. Cross has been a stakeholder in Palm Beach County's Hunger Relief Plan since its inception in two thousand and fifteen. We are excited about the current project that will facilitate collaboration to expand capacity, including the capacity of hunger relief agencies, pantries, and hot meal programs. During the current gleaning season, November of two thousand and twenty-one to date, with the help of some two-thousand-five-hundred volunteers, Cross has gleaned and recovered over seven-hundred-and-twenty-thousand pounds of fresh fruits and vegetables, produce that would have otherwise gone to waste. This is a new record for us, and we still have three more months of the gleaning season left. We are grateful for funding from the Board of County Commissioners, our growers, our other funding partners, and volunteers who have made it possible to recover the produce. Our community distribution partners, including our local food banks, ensure that the produce gets to food pantries and meal kitchens. Funding for this project through United Way of Palm Beach County will expand the capacity of the hunger relief system, including enhancements that will create space to process through drying and freezing the fresh produce that is gleaned and recovered, thus expanding its, its shelf life so that fruits and vegetables are available during non-harvest months, and especially during the summer and early fall, when our brothers, our sisters, and neighbors often need the assistance of hunger relief agencies the most. The capacity building projects afforded by this funding, including the commercial kitchen, job training, nutrition education classes, and increased warehouse space, will benefit hunger relief agencies receiving food from our local food banks and clients that we, we serve. Last year alone, Cross served close to seventy-three thousand individuals, with five thousand of them visiting our pantries for the first time. With the rising cost of gas prices, skyrocketing rents, and the long-term challenges from the pandemic, many Palm Beach County residents will continue to need help putting food on the table, paying their bills, and taking care of their families for quite a while to come. Building the capacity of the hunger relief system is key in ensuring that we are prepared and in a position to bridge the gaps. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for everything Cross does.
Our final speaker will be Frank Campiani.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thanks to Board for allowing us to be here today. Thanks for, Ms. Baker, for her continued support of this initiative. It's very nice to be here today on behalf of the United Way. And I guess I should back up and introduce myself, Frank Campiani. I'm the Board Chair of United Way at the current time, so about a year and a half into my term as Board Chair of United Way. It's great to be here to talk about the deepening, about deepening our collaborative efforts to significantly alleviate hunger here in Palm Beach County. As you may recall, Palm Beach County Government is the original partner and catalyst with the United Way of Palm Beach County for the development of the comprehensive Palm Beach County Hunger Relief Plan created seven years ago to reduce hunger here in Palm Beach County. As mentioned, more than one-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand residents in Palm Beach County still struggle with hunger. This is a nine-point-two-four-percent reduction since last year at the height of the pandemic. We are moving the needle, but there is still much work to do, especially given, given other factors like rapidly escalating housing costs and increasing prices of basic needs. The kitchen expansion and food processing facility is part of the initial Hunger Relief Plan and will significantly help reduce hunger and positively affect our neediest residents. We are delighted that the county is considering matching United Way's Mackenzie Scott funds set aside for hunger relief to make this transformative project a reality. United Way conducted a competitive process to identify an organization that had the capacity, technical experience, and financial sustainability to execute the vision for this project. Proposals were reviewed and vetted by a volunteer committee, and the Palm Beach County Food Bank was recommended for its programmatic and fiscal soundness. Our Board approved contracting with the food bank pending this agenda item being approved today. United Way will closely monitor the implementation of this project and will convene a Commercial Kitchen and Processing Facility Oversight Committee, compromised of subject matter experts, and well-respected Palm Beach County community leaders. United Way Hunger Relief and Palm Beach County Food Bank staff will regularly meet with the Oversight Committee and provide updates on work plans, logic models, and sustainability. On behalf of the entire United Way Board and staff leadership, I can't thank you enough for your continued confidence in working so closely with the United Way on this incredible game-changing effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. We appreciate your service and as, as the leader of United Way.
Thank you.
Mayor, we do have two non-speaking cards with comments. I don't know if you'd like them read. I mean, one is from Nancy Bolton, so I don't know if we want to read that into the record.
Oh, I think we should give Nancy her due.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm pleased to see the above referenced item for the United Way. Appropriation of ARPA funds provide funding assistance for the expansion of Hunger Relief System at Palm Beach County Food Bank in order to increase food bank storage and food processing capacity in the county. This is an important component of Hunger Relief Plan, which you adopted in two thousand and fifteen, and will expand the hunger relief infrastructure. And I'm grateful to see the staff advance this important initiative for your consideration, and I encourage unanimous approval. And I, these are my comments now. I have no doubt that she had been very much involved in pushing this forward.
Absolutely, and we miss you, Nancy.
And then the last speaking card is from Lynn Kunis, Flippenny CEO. Flippenny as a partner, probably saying that wrong. As a partner of the United Way, Hunger Relief Plan strongly supports this agenda item to ensure Palm Beach County residents have Plan strongly supports this agenda item to ensure Palm Beach County residents have access to healthy meals, nutrition, and education.
Okay, just for a matter of clarity again, this is a sub-recipient agreement with United Way of Palm Beach County, period of April 1, 2022 to September 30, 2026, an amount not to exceed $4,529,858. There is no county match required. May I have a motion? Second. I have a motion by the vice mayor. I have a second by Commissioner Bernard. All in favor? All opposed? Commissioner Baker, I'm sorry, Commissioner Baker. You want to be commissioner someday? When you grow up, do you want to be a commissioner?
No.
All right, county administrator, you are recognized.
Your job is too hard. No, I don't. Thank you, Mayor. I want to recognize staff on this particular initiative. It has been, again, a long road. It's part of our ending hunger, which started with, under John Van Arnhem's tutelage when he was here, so I want to give him credit for that. Continued with Nancy, and now Mr. Duren has it. And Taruna, James, Helene, thank you for your hard work in this. We kind of played around with it, but staff made it happen, and I think we're all the better for it. We've got a longer-term lease on this facility because we've leveraged our revenue replacement dollars with United Way's grant, and so we only had to spend 4.5 million, and we came out with 8.5 million to make our food bank a better place, that all of our pantries will be able to work with them and actually move forward with more food in our communities. But I'm really excited about building the partnership with our local small business owners and entrepreneurs that own their own, operate food-related cottage industry businesses, but they need additional commercial space. So this will be a win-win for our businesses, small businesses, as well as the food bank under United Way's tutelage. So again, I want to thank staff. I want to thank United Way. Seth, thank you, you and Lori, and the food bank. So thank you very much, and we look forward to continuing our relationship and ensuring no resident in Palm Beach County goes hungry.
All right. And on that, we will have a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Show that it's being approved, seven to zero. You did a great job carrying the ball on that. All right. And we will allow that demonstration of support. All right, that ends the main event, the, ends our regular agenda. We're now going to move on to board appointments. I'll start with my right, your left, and so Commissioner McKinley, what you got?
I have nothing.
Nothing for Commissioner McKinley. Commissioner Moreno?
None at this time, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Sacks?
None at this time.
Commissioner Bernard?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Kerner?
None, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
None, sir.
I got none. Okay, we're moving right along. Okay, administrator, what you got for us?
We can receive and file, or I can give you some highlights.
Look, I'm, we got a couple of minutes. We're not going anywhere. We got a 2:00, you know, public matters by the public.
There was a letter, the mayor's letter, we were, that sport directed, go out to the school board. We had that conversation with them.
I think we can defer on that letter since we've already had the conversation. Thanks to Commissioner Sacks.
And we all, just so you know, we've been working, as the superintendent stated, working together on reviewing school sites, and we will continue.
Very good.
Working with them on that. You directed us to research the options available for rent increases. We are currently working, we worked with the county attorney's office on researching the possibility of providing and extending notices to renters of any increase in rent above 5%. It is expected that an agenda item requiring further direction will be brought back to the board by the June meeting to move forward on that particular issue. We will be recommending that we actually do the 60-day notice if it's 5% or more.
That's all you got?
That's enough for me.
Okay. I am looking for a motion to receive and file.
So moved.
I have a motion by the vice mayor, seconded by Commissioner Kerner. All in favor? All opposed? It has been received and filed. County attorney, what you got?
No comments.
Oh, come on. You got to have something. We pay you by the hour.
No.
Yeah, she gets minimum wage by the hour, right?
It's not what it averages.
All right. We're going to go to commissioner comments. I'm going to start with my left now, and so Commissioner Sacks, you're up.
Well, I got something, Mayor. In light of our discussion...
You always have something.
Pardon me, sir?
You always got something.
I know I do. And it's something good, because in light of the commissioner's comments, Commissioner McKinley, with regard to integrity of, and also the, I cannot, but the, the habit, I can't pronounce this word, but help me out a little bit, the ability of our housing structures to house people in a way that is safe. And in light of the fact that May is dedicated to Structural Integrity Month, I would like to propose at this time that we review what we are doing with regard to inspections of high-rise condos. We are also facing a special session of the Florida Legislature that is going to be reviewing insurance. It may or may not, but it probably will review inspections of buildings. We have two counties to the south of us that already have county ordinances that require inspections of high-rise buildings. They are immediately to our south. We are, we are, we use the same, we have the same surf, we have the same sand, we have the same wave movements in Palm Beach County. And also, in light of the June 24, 2021 event that was mentioned in discussions today, and in light of the incoming, I feel like I'm doing a proclamation here, huh? Whereas we are going into hurricane season, I would propose at this time that we review our high-rise inspection report so that we can have an idea of what Palm Beach County is going to be doing with regard to structural integrity of buildings on the, especially on the east side.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think, and I've had conversations also along those lines with our county administrator and with Mr. Rutter, and I think that they continue to have discussions with the league of cities. I see Mr. Ratcliffe is here. And we certainly are hoping our friends in Tallahassee may take this up during the special session. I think we want to be careful with the way that we address this. We don't want to be taking on additional liabilities as a county as we step into these inspections and start, you know, putting ourselves out there as, being viewed as guaranteeing the structural integrity of buildings. So we have to walk carefully. And I think that, Mr. Rutter, you have anything to add?
Just want to point out for the board, we're headed down the same path, Commissioner. We were prepared to come back to you May 17, seeking the board's direction, post your direction in the fall. From the work we had done when we paused our local efforts pending action, the legislature may or may not take in the session. They took none. We were prepared to come back in May, seeing the calling of the special session with the potential for something to be done. We were just going to postpone returning to the board in June then. Wait for the conclusion of the session if anything were to occur. We have had one meeting with, Mr. Ratcliffe has been a great partner in bringing building officials from our cities together with our county folks as well. We've had one meeting so far following up on activities. I've got another one in the works, but we'll be prepared to talk to you and take your direction in June.
Very good. And of course, as I said in my proclamation today, we are not just sitting there watching this go by. Our people are out there. Code enforcement is enforcing the building codes, ensuring that if there is a situation, we are going to respond to it. We're not just waiting to see if something happens. Mr. Rutter?
And I'd be remiss to not point out, our program that we do have in place that our building division employs is doing that very thing. We've had, unfortunately, occasion to employ those, that need a number of times, most recently, a couple of weeks ago, I can think of an event. So we're out there working it. We have programs in place, continue to do so, and we'll take direction from the board when we move forward on what we may or may not want to do, taking that to the next level.
Mr. Ratcliffe, you are certainly recognized. We always appreciate your attendance at our meetings.
Yes. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. We met April 18, and it was very, very curious. This is all the 39 municipalities were represented, and Palm Beach County were together. The one thing that was readily apparent is that the political scene is changing. People are becoming more aware, and as a group, we want to stay proactive. We've been that from the start, but most assuredly, we wanted everybody to know in Palm Beach County and in the municipalities that people are safe, that people have, people have been, buildings have been condemned and unincorporated in Palm Beach County. We had one two months ago in Toquista. So there are things that are in place. We hope that the legislature will do what they are there to do, is just like with the hurricane code. It should be across the state. That's what building safety should be, the same thing. They should set the standard. We're hoping that they do that. We're hoping that that will happen, but we are not going to sit on our laurels and wait. So we have another meeting. We are waiting till after the building officials meet at their conference in June. We're going to meet July 18. We're going, and our goal is to try and work with the county to put, if in the event that they don't do something in a special session, we'd like to have a document, because there's a big diversity between all our 39 municipalities and what they're going to be affected, how they're going to be affected. But we want to have a baseline document that is as uniform as possible and easily that the county and the cities can adapt to their, you know, their little local differences, whether it's 20 miles from the coast or right on the coast. So thank you for the opportunity, and we appreciate working with you. But, you know, we have worked very, very hard. We took some things from the south, but it's very, very apparent that a lot of what this, our task force and what we've done together ended up in the legislature, proposed legislation. So we want to stay on top of it, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. And as always, we appreciate you coordinating the efforts between the unincorporated and the incorporated areas. We certainly respect home rule and want to work within those parameters. Commissioner Sacks?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm very pleased to hear that we've done a lot of work. Now, let me suggest this. Why, because I think it's a Palm Beach County way. We have a unique frontage. We have a unique topography that is similar to Broward and Dade, but certainly not similar to areas such as Tallahassee, Wacala County, Dixie County, Jacksonville City. And I think that we need to have a Palm Beach County way of having a structural integrity inspections. So if we've done already so much, may I suggest that we send to Tallahassee through our lobbying board what we have already done, so that when they do look at issues of insurance and structural integrity for the entire state, that they will know that we have a certain way of doing things, and we have a method and mythology of looking at not just city buildings, but also those buildings that may be unincorporated. I personally think that we should look and borrow from what Broward and Dade County has already done, because they're so close to us in our topographies, so, so similar. But I, and I know that this thing is going to go on through the summer. I hesitate to see it takes so long, but if that's what you are reporting, sir, then that's what it is. But if you've already done so much work, let's go ahead and send up a report to Tallahassee to let them know that this is the way that we, if, if left alone in home rule, Mayor, which I think you're a great proponent of, and so all of us are, let's show them what home rule means, which is if left to our devices, Palm Beach County has an inspection program that is, that is singular to us, and that we will be ready to implement, hopefully before hurricane season. So that's what I would move at this time.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a, as a proud Haitian-American who was born in Haiti, it's a pleasure to celebrate the month as May as Haitian Heritage Month. Haitian Heritage Month offers the opportunity to celebrate Haitian culture and Haitian contributions to the world. Haitian Heritage Month is an extension of the commemoration of May 18, Haitian Flag Day. Our library system, through the leadership of Doug Crane, they typically have many events throughout the county, and we encourage the public to participate and attend many of these events. And what I do wish for every Haitian to live out their motto, which is "Luneau, Fais la Fosse," and Happy Haitian Heritage Month and Happy Haitian Flag Day to all. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor. I join Commissioner Bernard in those important and meaningful comments, and I have no further comment.
Very good. Commissioner McKinley?
Couple of items. First, I'd like to do a request for two off-site proclamations. The first declaring May 2022 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Palm Beach County, and the second declaring May at 2022 as Foster Care Awareness Month.
I have a second by Commissioner Kerner. All in favor? All opposed? Seven to zero. You have your off-site proclamations.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to say thank you to our Cooperative Extension staff, and particularly Mr. Ron Rice, who's sitting in the audience today. Since our last meeting, I had the honor of being one of two elected officials across the nation to testify before the United States International Trade Commission on the impact of trade agreements on Florida agriculture and its workforce. And it was quite an honor. We submitted our follow-up comments yesterday, and Mr. Rice helped me prepare some of that testimony, along with some of our area farmers. So much appreciated. Please utilize Cooperative Extension. He is a great resource. The last thing, you know, we don't often talk about federal political issues. I don't really want to change that, but I do want to go on the record. It's just simply saying it's a very sad day to be a woman in America today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Moreno?
Oh, you got my name right.
I got it right today. How do you like, it's that name tag you're wearing.
Okay. I'm not going there. First, I would like to request an off-site proclamation declaring May 5, 2022 as National Day of Prayer in Palm Beach County.
I have a second by Commissioner Kerner. All in favor? All opposed? It is approved.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. Impact the Palm Beaches did two $100,000 Impact Grants this week. It's a member of over 200 women that each write a $1,000 check, so we can make a huge impact in the community. And the recipients this year were Vita Nova receiving $100,000, and Feed the Hungry feeding $100,000, which seems so apropos, considering what we did earlier today with feeding the hungry. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of the women who are Impact members for their impact on our community. Also, I'd like to congratulate several of our, members of our fire department and our police department. The Palm Beach North had their Valor Awards, and several of our first responders received awards there, so I just wanted to say thank you. And with that, I'm done. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf, on behalf of District Four, I'd like to request the following off-site proclamations, recognizing May 5, 2022 as the 74th anniversary of Israel Independence Day, recognizing the 70th anniversary of PapCor, Champions for Cancer Research, and declaring May 7, 2022 as KOP Mentoring Network Ladies of Distinction Day.
I have a second from Commissioner Kerner. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you for doing that on my behalf.
Okay. Just a couple of brief comments. One, I just, I want to congratulate Sunfest for having a five-day, a four-day event. Sunfest returning after a two-year hiatus due to the pandemic, and it was a successful event. Thousands of people, both locally and some visitors, attended, and it was, went off without a hitch. But also to recognize the fact that Sunfest is primarily a volunteer-driven event and organization, and thanks to all the volunteers that, that made it a successful event. And so thanks to all. so thanks to all. And in, in following on in the vein, I normally don't get involved in foreign relations or anything like that, but unfortunately, I, I can't let this go without commenting. Russian Foreign Minister speaking in Italy recently said some really vile and troubling things, somehow alluding to the fact that Adolf Hitler was somehow Jewish and inflicted the Holocaust on the Jew, inflicted the Holocaust on the Jewish people, which is just absurd, and also something to the effect that Jew, Jewish people are responsible for anti-Semitism, which is also absurd and disgusting. And I, I just, I know Israel has called in their, their ambassador to express their total distaste and disdain for what was said, and, and I, I just want to say how disappointed I was that they continue to send this kind of propaganda around the world.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Administrator Baker?
I, I can either wait, it's just a clarification.
That's okay.
Going back to our building inspections, I think Mr. Rutter stated we'd come back to you in June. However, that was followed up by the representative from the League of Cities that said the building officials are going to meet in July. So I'd like to ask this Board to allow us to work with them, come back at our August meeting, because that way we'll know what the Legislature have done, and we will also have met with the building officials, as opposed to June.
Very good. Thank you for the clarification. All right, a couple of small items. I'm pleased to note that the Governor still hasn't signed South Senate Bill 620. That's the Local Business Protection Act, so there's still a possibility that that's not going to go forward. We can only hope. I want to thank Erm, especially Deb Drum, for the very detailed analysis of what was a front-page story on, in the Palm Beach Post about our friends in Lagerhead. There's obviously some issues that need to be addressed, and I think between the county and between marine life, those issues will be addressed, and certainly we are hoping for the sake of our coastal community, those, those issues can be addressed rapidly. I just noticed coming across the wire that the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court has affirmed that the leaked memo that we have all heard about from Justice Alito is actually a bona fide document. So I guess there's going to be a lot of discussion about that potential, that potential ruling. If you are hiding under a rock, it looks like Roe versus Wade is going to have some changes, and that will be coming up probably before the Supreme Court ends its session this, this year. That being said, we are at 12:25. We're coming back at 2:00 to hear matters by the public, so we'll see you then. We're in recess.